Recording in progress.
Good evening and welcome to the Lowell zoning Board of Appeals public meeting for July 26, 2021. Due to the COVID-19 pandemic, the meeting is live, however, you can also join by Zoom or watch on LTC. All documents are on our website and updated accordingly. If you wish to speak to a petition this evening, please come to the podium, address yourself, state your name and address for the public record. If you have a cellphone, please place it on vibrate and take calls in the hall and minimize your interior conversation. This evening, our alternate voting members, Mr. Robert Nairobi, we'd like to welcome him to the zoning board as this is his first meeting in the chambers. Welcome. He's been with our board for a while now, and it's welcome to have him with his knowledge and move forward with a full board. We do have one member attending via Zoom, Mr. McCarthy, and a member luckily on vacation. We're going to start tonight with continued business, ZBA 2021-10, a special permit in variance, EJ Properties LLC at 95 Market Street, Article 12 and Section 6.1. EJ Properties LLC has applied to Lowell zoning Board of Appeals, seeking special permit and variance approval at 95 Market Street. The proposed application seeks to renovate and develop the second floor of the existing building to three residential apartments. The subject property is located in the downtown mixed-use DMU zoning district. The applicant requires special permit approval per Article 12 for use, in variance approval per Section 6.1 for relief from the off-street parking requirements or for any other relief required on a Lowell zoning ordinance. It's brought to my attention that Attorney Gary will be joining representing the petitioner by Zoom. His counsel with us.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the board for the record. My name is John Gary of the Law Offices of Gary &amp; Gary LLP, 32 Church Street, Lowell, Mass. I'm here tonight, as you mentioned, representing EJ Properties LLC. So with us tonight is John Noto, Principal of EJ Properties,
Recording stopped.
And Anthony Nana of Studio 26 Associates, the architect for the project. Anthony is also a partner in this project. As the chairman mentioned, this hearing was continued from a previous hearing. I was not representing EJ Properties at that initial hearing, but I did have the opportunity to view the meeting online, and I'm up to speed where that meeting left off. As the board is aware, EJ Properties is before you tonight requesting a special permit pursuant to Section 12 of the City of Lowell zoning bylaws and a variance for lack of off-street parking pursuant to Section 6.1 of the bylaws. We have requested a waiver of the site plan's submitted requirement since the building occupies the entire lot and all improvements are being made entirely within the building. The subject property is located at 95 Market Street. It's in the downtown mixed-use zoning district as well as the downtown historic district. At the last hearing, it was my impression from watching the meeting that this board was generally in favor of issuance of the special permit and the variance, but had continued the meeting in effort to give the applicant and the owner of the next-door business an opportunity to come up with some solutions for any potential noise control problems. To that end, we have provided the board with a revised floor plan, which proposes to flip the units from the original design so that the two one-bedroom units are on the blue shamrock on the left side of the building, and the one-two-bedroom unit is on the far right side of the building. The one-bedroom units are also proposing to show the bedrooms towards the center wall, towards the center of the property. Clearly, the purpose for flipping the units as proposed is to, one, minimize the impact of the noise coming from the blue shamrock to these units, and, two, to minimize the number of residents that could potentially be impacted by any noise-related concerns since those units are only one-bedroom units. The applicant is also proposing to add soundproofing to the bedroom walls of the one-bedroom units and also to incorporate some soundproofing into the flooring. We feel these modifications should suffice to mitigate the concerns related to the noise coming from the neighboring business. Ultimately, the applicant meets the criteria for issuance of the special permit by aligning with the City of Lowell master plan as well as Sustainable Lowell 2025, by providing much-needed market-rate housing for the second story of this building, which has been vacant for quite some time, really due to the fact that there's no viability for commercial use on that second-floor unit. The proposed redevelopment will also enhance the character of this neighborhood by converting an underutilized building into a vibrant mixed-use building once construction is complete and the property is fully occupied. Also, with the property being located in the downtown and directly on Market Street, there's sufficient access to fire, safety, and service equipment directly to the property. Parking for visitors and residents is easily accommodated with nearby municipal parking. I believe the board is in receipt of a letter from the parking director confirming that the Leo Roy garage has capacity to handle parking for this particular building. With regard to the noise concern previously expressed by the owner of the abutting business, my client has made good faith efforts to do his very best to alleviate those concerns to the extent that he can without jeopardizing his investment. We do not believe that there's any solution to the noise issue that can completely resolve this issue, but it's important to point out that this is an allowed use with the issuance of a special permit, and my client meets the criteria for issuance of the special permit. The fact that there's a bar or nightclub next door should not prevent my client from redeveloping his property. In addition, any residents that may be interested in living at 95 Market Street will be made well aware of the business next door and the possibility of any noise from that business impacting any residents' use and enjoyment of the units. As long as the neighbor operates within the noise ordinance of the City of Lowell, we do not anticipate any issues. So with all that being said, we respectfully request the issuance of the special permit and the variance for off-street parking. At this time, I'd like to hand the meeting off to Anthony, who will go through the revisions to the plan since the last hearing, and then John Noto will review a sound analysis that he did with the help and assistance of Nick Petracas of the Blue Shamrock. And of course, we're always happy to answer any questions from the board or the public. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Gentlemen?
Thank you, Anthony Gary, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Thank you for allowing us to come again in front of you. It feels like it's been almost two months since we last appeared, but in that period of time, we did take efforts to meet with our next-door neighbor to discuss the issue of noise, and John Noto is going to talk a little bit more about that. I'm going to share my screen if I can, and just to show you the floor plan changes that we made with respect to the concerns that were raised then. And I'm just going to focus on this new floor plan here. So previously, the way the plan is oriented on your screen, the blue shamrock would be to the left, if you can see my mouse here. And previously, we had the one larger unit that would have possibility of two bedrooms occupying that entire length of the building, abutting the nightclub. So what we did is that we mirrored the plan so that the bigger unit is farther away and therefore more isolated in terms of sound and privacy, and we put the two one-bedroom units against that wall. These units will likely be rented by someone who is either single or a young couple, not anyone likely to have young children. The other thing we did is that we moved the bedrooms away from the wall abutting the blue shamrock, and the walls around the sleeping rooms, the bedrooms themselves, we will provide additional insulation in those walls. Those walls will be full height. The doors to those bedrooms and pretty much the doors to the main rooms will all be solid doors, so that, again, we are mitigating any sound that comes through the brick wall. Mr. Chairman, one of the values about these old buildings is the beauty of the brick wall, and we would like to enjoy the value of that brick wall as much as we can by leaving it exposed, because it enhances the value of these units for the people that want to live in downtown Lowell. I think that covers pretty much most of what we're going to do. We discussed the last time that we would be doing insulation pretty much along the entire floor, and we're going to do it from the second floor itself because the two commercial units are already occupied, and we don't want to go and disrupt the businesses that are already there. So whatever we do, we'll be able to have some sound absorption before we put our new floor. Pretty much, we're going to be building up another floor and putting some sound absorption layers underneath, because potentially, you know, one of the new tenants that's on the left-hand side, there could also be some noise levels from there as well. I don't have anything else to say. I'll let John Noto share our sound measurement exercise that we did, and then I can always answer questions after that. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. So I'd like to talk a little bit about some sound measurements we made with Nick and the sound guy at the Shamrock. Let me just share my screen.
Sir, if you could just state your name and address for the public record, please. Appreciate that.
Hi, I'm John Noto. I'm the managing member of EJ Properties, and I live at 181 Market Street in downtown Lowell.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, fortunately, this is not letting me share my screen. I have to drop off, and I'll rejoin immediately. Is that okay?
John, do you want to talk about the method that you used to come up with the sound while you're doing that, or do you need to...
I guess I could just talk about it. We had measured the... We worked with Nick, and while the sound guy at the Shamrock was playing music at a comparable volume to an evening event, we measured the sound level in the Shamrock, Gemstones, the upstairs club of the Shamrock. And then we walked next door to the 95 Market space, and we measured the sound over there, and there's about a 50 decibel reduction in sound. So if you were 95 decibels in the top of the Shamrock, over on the 95 Market Street side, you'd be below 50. I think everyone knows that the ordinance requirement is 50 or less for 95, you know, 95 decibels of sound. So we are... There we go. So we are kind of within the requirement, you know, now. So, okay, Anthony, if you could show the slides. So the first slide from beginning. Just hit "from beginning." Okay, so I'll just start with this slide here. All right, so this is the, you know, a set of sound measurements that we made at 95 Market Street for residential conversion. I'll talk a little bit about sound. Just want to go to the next slide. Okay, so I think we all know a lot about sound, but I just wanted to make sure that we all know that the decibel is a factor of 10. So, you know, 20 decibels is like 10 times louder than 10 decibels, and 30 decibels is 100 times louder than 10 decibels. So when we're talking about 50 decibels of sound reduction, that's an enormous amount of sound reduction from the two brick walls. Okay, next slide, please. All right, so then the sound ordinance. In any enclosed space, again, I'm not an expert in ordinances, but in any enclosed space, you can't have a sound level in excess of 95 decibels for more than 30 seconds. And just to give you an idea, you know, normal conversation, about 60 decibels, rainfall, about 50 decibels. So, you know, the ordinance is about 50 decibels. If you go to the next slide. So in the mixed-use area, again, from 10:00 PM to 7:00 AM, you can't do something that creates 50 decibels or more of sound pressure in somebody else's space. So that kind of limits the amount of noise that is allowed from somebody else's space. We have to have enough sound level reduction to go from the 95 decibels in the Shamrock to below 50 in 95 Market. So if you go to the next slide. We made some measurements on June 8th with Nick and the sound guy from Shamrock. We used a sound meter, not a really high-end sound meter, but the similar sound meter to what the police use for measuring sound. If you go to the next slide, you'll see some pictures. So here is the 95 Market Street space. You can see the nice brick wall, see the wood floors, and the suspending thing that we're going to remove, and that is the wall that is next to the Shamrock. On the right side, you can see the sound meter we use. And if you go to the next slide, we'll start with the measurements. So in the Shamrock, with the music going, you can see 95, maybe 98 decibels. This is measured at the Shamrock side of the brick wall, and so, you know, this is within the loud limits. And then we walked over back to 95 Market Street in the next slide, and you see here somewhere between 47 to 49 decibels on the other side. So, you know, right there, we're close. The limit is 50 decibels. We're just below that, and that's with no mitigation whatsoever. So, and that's because brick, the two brick walls, is a very effective sound blocker. So I think that, I mean, we're already within, we're near, we're in compliance with the sound ordinance. Next slide, please. So just some takeaways from the measurements. You know, the low frequency does propagate better than the high frequency, but we do get nearly 50 dB of sound reduction through the two brick walls. And, you know, so as long as the sound at the Shamrock is within the legal limit of the ordinance and the guidelines, you know, the sound in 95 Market is less than 50 decibels, and that's with the room empty, right? If you put some furniture in there, it would mitigate it a little bit, but we have these mitigations anyway. So, next slide. All right, so we're going to move the bedrooms away from the shared wall, and Anthony spoke about that. We're going to add some extra soundproofing. We are going to install double-pane windows so any outside noise is mitigated, and we are going to make potential tenants and owners, you know, aware that they're next to a bar and that downtown Lowell, you know, can be a busy place on a Friday and Saturday night. And we will reference all sound ordinances and standards in the building bylaws. Next slide, please. And this is basically our hope. There's room for all of us to live and work in a thriving downtown. We hope that having a few more apartments down there would help. Thank you.
Thanks, John. So, Mr. Chairman, we're happy to listen to input from the board or the public and then answer any questions.
Thank you, Counselor. That being said, I'd like to open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak in favor? In favor? In favor? That portion of the public area is now closed. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition?
Wait. Wait, what?
Do we have someone?
Yes. Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead. Ma'am, why don't you go first?
Anyone wishing to speak in favor, sir?
So my name is Alyssa Hennebury, and I live at 160 Merrimack Street in downtown Lowell, and I wanted to show my support for this conversion. I think it would be terrific to have more spaces downtown and to maintain the historical and architectural appeal of the building. It's what brings people to Lowell, and I moved here 10 months ago and love it, and I'm happy to see more people enjoy it as well.
Thank you, and welcome to Lowell. Thank you for spending time tonight and sharing your comments. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? In favor?
I think somebody's trying to speak, Mr. Chairman, but his sound might be mitigated, might be on mute.
Sir, I believe you're on mute.
Do we know which participant is trying to speak?
Hello, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Hi.
State your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Sam Burdette. I reside at 71 Jackson Street in Lowell, and I wanted to support this motion. So I moved to Lowell in 2015, and as someone coming in from out of state, living alone, it was nearly impossible for me to find market-rate housing that wasn't through one of the larger rental companies. And as someone who was unable to or did not want to have a roommate because I was new to the area, I struggled for a very long time to find a place. So I think that what John and EJ Properties here are proposing is a great thing for downtown Lowell. I think a lot of people love living downtown, myself included, and I hope you continue to support this.
Thank you. Thanks for sharing. Any others wishing to speak in favor?
I have a... If I can say something briefly? I don't know if you can hear me?
Yes, certainly. We're in the...
Thanks. My name is Beth Falk. I am the co-owner of the Lowell Culinary Collaborative at 160 Merrimack in downtown Lowell, and as a downtown business owner, I'm coming to this meeting after a Zoom that we had just this morning with a group of downtown Lowell business owners and one of the consultants that's been retained by the city to talk about recovery, post-COVID recovery funds. And I just wanted to chime in because one of the topics that's been under discussion a great deal in these business development and economic expansion meetings is the issue that downtowns tend to become more economically vibrant and viable when residential spaces are increased and maintained. And I'm certainly seeing that, you know, as condominiums fill up downtown, it does nothing but increase foot traffic in the business district, kind of gives people who have an investment as residents of an area a really strong interest in maintaining and keeping those neighborhoods safe and vibrant. And I think that the expansion of residential options within the sort of critical few blocks that are the heart of downtown could certainly have a lot of benefits to all of us as business owners and as people who care about the city as well. So I'm always in favor of seeing responsibly managed residential units increased. That's my support. Thank you.
Thank you. Any others wishing to speak in favor? In favor?
Yes, I would like to. I just... My name is Benjamin Brown. I live at 71 Jackson Street downtown as well. I would also just like to iterate, reiterate what was said earlier. As somebody who moved into Lowell about five years ago, I also had a large struggle trying to find reasonable housing without a roommate and without, you know, relying on some of the larger... on some of the larger, some of the larger companies, which were fine, but it, it would be nice to be able to live downtown and support a local business. I will say, I know John a little bit and know that it would be very, he is a very responsible individual, and I have every trust that the, the, the plans that they have gone through to mitigate the noise and to provide a suitable living environment for their tenants would probably go above and beyond what is necessary. And so I just want to, again, voice my support for this and, and for John as a, as a landlord and a business owner.
Thank you, sir. Any others wishing to speak in favor? In favor? In favor? That portion of the public hearing is now closed. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition?
Good evening, members of the-
Good evening, sir.
My name is Raymond Wyker. I live at 14 Watson Street. I am here as counsel-
Sir, if I may, if I may interrupt you, we have, we already have a gentleman at the podium in, in chambers, so we'll, we'll come back to you. Sorry about the inconvenience.
Unless, Mr. Petracas, you want to let Mr. Wyker speak on your behalf first, and then you want to discuss? It's up to you.
Whatever's good with you, gentlemen, that's fine. I'll go second.
Okay. Sir, if you, if you will, the floor-
I would have been perfectly happy to have Mr. Petracas speak.
The floor is now yours, and thank you for your patience and understanding.
No, well, thank you. My name is Raymond Wyker. I live at 14 Watson Street. I'm here as counsel for Mr. Petracas, and I appreciate the board allowing me to appear by Zoom. While I'm fully immunized, my older brother is immunocompromised, so I really do appreciate not having to be in a crowd right now. What I would like to say is this is the issue we addressed. All right, Mr. Petracas wants good neighbors. He wants businesses, and we want this project to go forward with conditions. Those conditions have to guarantee that the tenants are not put in a position where they have to choose between their quality of life, right, or Mr. Petracas's businesses. The law is very clear that in order to introduce residential units in a commercial district, there must be no impact on the existing businesses. So the issue of noise was raised as a concern, and we have attempted to meet with and discuss some alternatives. They have not been well met. I understand Mr. Noto's presentation. It is a marginal call, and my concern is, I think, very, very well vested. I have sent forward some information that could be used in order to guarantee noise reduction. It has been rejected outright with no consideration. We've been presented with plans that say we'll put in some kind of noise-reducing insulation, yet no definitive answer as to how many decibels of noise will be mitigated. It is perfectly reasonable for this board to require noise reduction to a set decibel level in order to guarantee the quality of life for those tenants. If it is not a condition of the permit, it is not enforceable, which means that this board would be in a position where it created an untenable situation for individuals looking to live and work in the downtown. So what we are asking this board to do is to carry out its authorized duties. And I can cite you a series of cases, which I'm sure even your own law department has told you. I'm sure your law department has told you that cities and towns are allowed to place noise restrictions, are allowed to require mitigation, and you have that authority and you have that power. If Mr. Noto is so certain that his procedures will eliminate the noise risk, then we ask him to guarantee it. If he is saying, no, no, trust me, but I won't promise, we are then left in a situation where we have no choice but to engage this board or in litigation. What we're asking for is that this board, this commission, protect the tenants by requiring that sound mitigation be set at a certain level, that audible measures be put as a condition of the permit, and that will ensure a harmonious relationship between any business that has been in existence for 26 years and any new commercial enterprise being entered into by Mr. Noto. I understand you can make more money by showing exposed brick. And if the concern is just simply how much money Mr. Noto and Mr. Nagaja can make, then that should be the board's decision. If the concern is the quality of life for the tenants, then sound mitigation is the responsibility of this board. If the concern is that luxury items like rooftop decks are more important than whether or not occupants can sleep at night or hear their television, then ignore our pleas. If the concern is for the quality of life of the people who are going to live in the apartments, then require decibel reduction to a fixed level and make it a condition of the permit. That means if it's a condition of the permit, should the building be sold, whoever buys it buys the responsibility to maintain the quality of that flooring. We don't know the level of sound insulation. It's conveniently left out of the plans. We're told about flooring. Again, it's left out of the plans. The law says if it's not in the plans, it's not enforceable. So the promises that are being made without being included in the plans are hollow and are deliberately hollow because we all know the law requires that they have to be in the plans to be enforced. This board has the ability to enforce that. This board has the ability to put conditions on the permit, conditions on the permit that guarantee that residents living in these units have a minimal decibel level coming in from the outside from a pre-existing business that's been in place for 26 years. Now, we all know that when people go and rent apartments, it's unusual to get a showing at 10 o'clock at night. It's more common that people look during the daytime. And daytime and nighttime are very different for that business. For 26 years, dancing has started usually at nighttime. It's not loud during the day, right? It's a typical pub during the day, which has some noise, but nothing above mostly conversations and some light background music. In the evening, it's a dance club and has been licensed as such for more than two decades. That is when the occupants are going to be trying to sleep. These residents deserve the protection from this board. They must be protected by this board by putting a condition on that permit, requiring that a level of sound be maintained and that the people who are asking for the economic benefit, the people asking to be enriched by this special permit, must defend and indemnify the quality of their work. If they will not stand behind the quality of their work, then they should not be given the special permit. They should not be allowed to destroy the lives of potential residents. They should not be allowed to damage neighboring businesses. If they are telling the truth, standing up, raising their hand, and swearing to it, then they're happy to have it put as a condition that they defend and indemnify the quality of their work. If they are not, if they intend to allow things to slip, to build, to do a poor job, to do a shoddy job, to cut corners in order to maximize their profits, then they will ask you to leave these off. At this point, I'd like to turn the floor over to Mr. Petracas. I think he would be more than happy to tell you that he wants to be a good neighbor. He wants to have flourishing businesses. Flourishing businesses help him as much as anyone else. All right? But he doesn't want to be in a situation where people move in during the daytime and are then awake at night and calling the police with noise complaints because an existing business of two and a half, oh, 26 years is now suddenly the problem. It's not. The law requires that anyone asking for the monetary benefit of a special permit to engage in residential occupancy in a commercial unit must ensure that it does not interfere with the existing commercial activity of the abutters. And it's this board's responsibility to make sure that we do not put their personal pocket profits over the quality of life of the prospective tenants. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to open up the public. Any others wishing to speak in opposition? In opposition? Good evening, sir.
Good evening. My name is Nick Petracas. My residence is 50 Staple Street in Lowell, but I'm also the proprietor of 105 Market Street with the Blue Shamrock's house in relation to what this hearing is about. First of all, I want to start off by saying that I like John and Anthony. I met with them. They're good guys. The only reason, you know, I got an attorney because I just said, well, I don't know all the legalese, and I just want to make sure that I'm protected somehow. And I picked an attorney because I found out when he was in the military, he did soundproofing for when tanks go by, and he did bunkers and stuff. So I'm like, he knows what he's talking about as far as soundproofing goes. So, like I said, and I'm all for someone making a buck, and I don't want to stop any whatever. From the very first meeting, and I explained this to John and Anthony, and they got it. I said, I'm just trying to protect what's mine. I'm coming out of, as everybody knows, restaurants, pubs, anything in the hospitality business. You know, it's been over a year and a half where we really suffer, you know? And like I said, I was born and raised in Lowell. My family's from Lowell. When, when a fine woman said that she was worried about the character of the buildings, and so I worked with the historic society more than anybody with my own building. And I'm sure no one wants to see, you know, one building, they say, we don't want that empty. Well, I don't want mine empty either, you know what I mean? I've been there 26 years, and I'm not looking to do anything different, just what I've always done. But I'm afraid, like, I was just going to come in, and I'm the type of guy that will shake hands with people and say, yeah, okay, you know what I mean? And it's come back to bite me, you know, as, as the expression goes. And, you know, I'm an old guy, but I have a very young family, and I got to stay in business for a while, and I'm already struggling as most, most restaurants, most, most hotels, anybody in the hospitality business, but especially the pubs and the restaurants. If you look anywhere, I mean, I forget what the percent is, because it's been updated all the time, because even now, the places have reopened, a vast majority are going to go out of business because they've, they've accumulated so much debt. And I'm one of those places that accumulate a lot of debt, so I'm, I'm already, you know, I'm already under the knife, so to speak. I can't have anything else go against me. I support a lot of the local businesses. I buy my stuff from Lowell Janitorial. I buy my paint from the Paint Shop on Market Street. I buy stuff from Market Street Market. My employees go to all the coffee shops. So, you know, it's not just the people that are right there. We do a lot. We also do a lot. When people have charity events in the past, we've hosted them, not just big ones, major ones, but also for ones you don't hear about. Someone needs a wheelchair, can we use the place? You know, my, my, my brother's, you know, down on his luck, can we use the place? We give back, you know? We don't, you know, we're not looking for the publicity by the grace of God, but we're very invested in the community. So I do see a couple flaws with the plan, only because they said, well, they moved the two one-bedroom ones closer to the wall and moved the two-bedroom one farther away. And then it was said, well, more than likely, a young couple, some younger people move in. Who knows who's going to move in? You know, it might be an older couple, it might be an older gentleman, an older woman who moved in. You can't say who's going to move in. And because I've talked to sound people, they told me there is a way to do it so that everybody's happy. I'm not looking to stop anybody, but I just want to be protected. And they told me there is a way to do it, but it's a very specific way. And, you know, I don't want to overstep my bounds or anything, whatever. Mr. Noto and Anthony, you know, it's their project, but they've told me, I said, well, how much would it cost to soundproof a, a wall this, you know, based on what I'm, you know, what I'm telling you? And they said, you know, somewhere around the lines of 10 grand, which 10 grand is 10 grand, but in the scheme of things, when you're talking about, you know, rooftop units and whatever, you know, it doesn't seem that that's unreasonable. Like I said, that's from talking to sound technicians. But they said up to the screws, up to the insulation, up to, it's a very precise method, but it will accommodate what it is. So I would ask that before anything's done, I get to at least see the plans because, so I can submit them to, you know, to the person that I know and say, and they'll say, yeah, because, and, and by no means am I trying to disparage John or Anthony. He's like to say, oh, I don't believe those guys, whatever, because they seem very generous, very honest guys, you know what I mean? They, they seem, but I like something, the only reason, like I said, the reason I went and got an attorney was because I said, I need something that's going to, I don't know about, you know what I mean? Something of this nature, so I need something that's going to protect me rather than just, oh, yeah, we're going to do this or that. So if I could get the plans and show, you know, some people on my side, and then maybe meet and say, okay, well, here's what my guys are saying. So it's not just so, you know, because like I said, I've done things my whole life on a handshake and, you know, a verbal agreement. But now I'm at the point of life and coming off the pandemic where I got too many people relying on me, you know what I mean? And my family, I'm the last line of defense. And, you know, and like I said, my building was a burnt-out building for 10 years. So I made an investment in the downtown from, I didn't get any grants, loans, it was, you know, relatives and friends and stuff, and the building was burnt out. So, you know, you don't want to fill one building at the expense of having another one empty. And I, I appreciate all the people that stuck up for John and Anthony. It speaks to their character. But I have a personal investment in this. You know, it's, you know, you can come up with, you can come up and talk about something and say, it's a great idea, and we're all in support, and I'm sure they mean that from the bottom of their hearts, but it doesn't really impact them like it does me. And I didn't open up in a residential neighborhood. I picked the heart of downtown Lowell. And downtown, like has already been stated, you know, if you want economic growth, you need some businesses down there. And I've been there almost 26 years. So I'm just looking to protect what I have. And like I said, them saying that they moved the rooms around, well, those two single-bedroom ones, why would they even, why would the tenants there be even, you know? Okay, you have the bigger room there, and they're saying, well, it could be a young couple. Like I said, that's, you know, we don't know what's going to happen. And I've seen things happen before where board members change, ownership changes, but I'm still there. And now who do I go to? I have the problem. It's like, how do I protect myself? I said, well, you know, at the time, we had this at the meeting, and whoever's in, in authority at that time is like, well, you know, okay, that's then. What are we going to do about it now? So what I'm trying to do is stop the problem before it happens. So like I said, I'm not, I'm not a good, I like John, I like Anthony. I don't want it to be an antagonistic thing because I know whatever. I'm just trying to protect myself. And like I said, I hired an attorney who was a, you know, somewhat of an expert in the field. And, you know, I told him, hey, you know, just get me what I need so I can keep going my business the way it is. So I appreciate all you gentlemen listening to me and just trying to talk from the heart without all the legalese and stuff. So thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate you coming up tonight. Any others wishing to speak in opposition? In opposition? In opposition? That portion of the public hearing is now closed. Unless we have any Zoom-
Mr. Chairman, could I respond to some of those comments?
Certainly, Counselor.
So I'd just start off by saying that we have all the respect in the world for Mr. Petracas and the business he runs there, and we understand the difficult time he has had in the last year, year and a half, and, and hope that better times are ahead of him. But having said that, we do meet the criteria for issuance of a special permit. We're bringing much-needed market-rate housing to the city of Lowell and specifically to the downtown, which, as one of the speakers in favor mentioned, is critical to the downtown. You need that residential use in order to support businesses in the downtown. We have taken mitigation efforts and acted in good faith to do so. Mr. Petracas was with Mr. Noto when they did those sound testing. We saw that the, the brick wall does provide a significant mitigation of sound. And then the soundproofing to the bedrooms and the bedrooms being moved to the center wall will help mitigate the sound. And, and it's also important to understand that the sound problem is not going to be from this development. It's not, not ever going to be a problem coming from this development. It's going to be from the neighbor. But if he, if he operates within the noise ordinance, we don't anticipate any problems whatsoever. Clearly, any residents that are going to occupy this property will be made aware of the, it's, it'd be, you know, clearly visible that they're buying next door to a bar, and then the, the developer will make them aware of any potential that the second floor is used as a nightclub from time to time. And Mr., Mr. Petracas is right. He said that we don't know what's going to happen in the future. We never know what's going to happen. He could, you know, that building could be- He could, you know, that building could be before you someday for conversion to residential use. Who knows what's going to happen? But I would submit to the board that we meet the criteria for issuance of a special permit. This is, the comments from the planning staff were very favorable for this project, and we would request that the board grant the variance and the special permit.
Thank you. Sir, if you'd like to, if you'd like to address the board, certainly, public hearing is still open, but please come back to the lectern.
I didn't know the procedure, but thank you. What I was saying was, if I could see, like when he said that they're going to do the soundproofing, well, I just think it'd be good if I could get that exact soundproofing. Obviously, they have a concrete plan. It's not an ambiguous thing. They have something very definitive in place. If I could get that plan and show it to, because I'm not working against them, I just want to make sure that it is sufficient, because I have some people that are expert in sound. If I could just get that before the decision is made and say, jeez, okay, jeez, you guys are great, or, you know, can you just do this, 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 and this? Can we change this a little bit? And then you have a chance to come back. That's what I'm saying, I'd appreciate it. And as the Counselor said, no, we don't know what's going to happen, but who's going to move in, but I'm trying to, like I said, I'm trying to alleviate something before it happens, and I get all the problems, and I was with Mr. Noto, and I was with Anthony, and they did, you know, we did do the sound check, whatever. Like I said, we were working together, but I have no, like I said, I'd like to see the plan so I could show them or someone so I know, you know, because that's like me telling any of you gentlemen or anybody else, hey, don't worry, I'm going to do this. And then you say to me, well, how are you going to do it? And I say, well, I'm going to do, you know, this and that. And you say, well, be specific, Nick. Show me, so I can, you know, you know, I have a huge investment. Show me, Nick, how you're going to do it. So all I'm saying is, give it to me, it might already be fine. It might be great. I just want to show it to some people who, you know, they're not going to look to find fault, they're just going to say, yeah, Nick, this is good, you know, you'll be protected. So that's all I was saying, you know, can I see the plans before there's a vote so that I can, you know, show the people that are experts to me so that they can take a look at it? Thank you.
Thank you.
If I may?
Counselor?
Oh, please, I'm sorry, misinterpret if you wish.
Well, I just wanted to sort of add to that conversation.
Pardon me, that public hearing is, we're closing. Are you speaking in opposition?
No.
Okay. So you, we're going to move forward in the public hearing of opposition. In favor is closed. It's not common practice to engage back and forth in public hearing. We certainly appreciate your time.
Well, I guess I just had it, all right.
I understand, thank you. That being said, any others wishing to speak in favor?
Opposition.
Oh, strike that. In opposition? I apologize. In opposition?
Members of the board, if I may? Attorney Raymond Wyker again?
Yes, Counselor.
Again, I understand my brothers taking the position that they otherwise meet the requirements for a special permit. However, the law for special permits specifically requires that the non-residentially zoned area would not be adversely affected by the residential use. That's a legal requirement. That's all we're asking for. All right, it's one thing for Mr. Gary to say that the noise would be coming from the Blue Shamrock, and that's true, it would be. That is its commercial use, its non-residentially zoned use for the last two and a half decades. If the noise attenuation is going to be done properly, then it should be a condition of the permit in order to prevent the conflict. The potential conflict comes from failure to adequately provide noise reduction. That is the source of all potential conflict here. The requirement is that in order to financially benefit from a special permit, which gives permission for something not otherwise permitted under zoning, you must make sure that you do not create the conflict. And the beauty of this is that by requiring the soundproofing, you actually protect the prospective tenants. And by putting it as a condition on the permit, it doesn't matter if Mr. Noto sells the building, because anyone who buys it will be on record and unaware of their obligation to maintain that quality of life and not to interfere in order to reduce that friction point. But the requirement is on the applicant, not on the existing business. That's the law, that's what they must do. We've proposed a solution whereby we would withdraw our objection if it's made a condition. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor.
Mr. Chairman, I don't know if I have the opportunity to go back again.
Certainly, Counselor.
Leave that up to you.
Representative.
Sure, so I think that what Mr. Wyker had suggested to me, or Attorney Wyker had suggested to me, that we indemnify and hold harmless the abut, which is a ludicrous proposition. I also think that he's taking the context of the law out of, taking the law out of context a little bit. We are not proposing to put a condominium development on Tanner Street. We're proposing to put a, three residential units on Market Street where there are hundreds of residential units on Market Street and throughout the downtown. So I think that's important to point out. And also, you know, shouldn't it, wouldn't it be appropriate to put any noise mitigation on the noise maker? Those are my thoughts.
Thank you, Counselor.
To which I would only respond that if the now proposal is to take away the noise in order to enrich Mr. Noto, then I have an admission from counsel on the record that it will be noxious to the existing non-residential business use. See, if that's the idea, then we're already violating the law. The idea has to be that if you want to do something by special permit, you can't impact the existing business. So we do ask, look, defend and indemnify is an easy guarantee to make if you build quality and if you actually do the noise reduction. If the noise reduction is such that there is no problem, then there is no need to worry about defend and indemnify. If the noise reduction is shoddy, not completed, not included in the plans, not made a condition of the variance that is in any way enforceable, then we're back to creating the problem. We're back to the question of where does the risk go? Does it go on the shoulders of the existing business, or does it go on the shoulders of the person seeking financial benefit by a special permit? The person seeking the new enrichment by law must bear that risk. So we're willing to withdraw our objection if this condition is placed. But if we're being asked to shoulder a risk for the financial benefit of Mr. Noto, the answer is no. If you'd like the financial benefit, you shoulder your own risk of your own tenants having noise problems. You're the landlord, you're responsible, you're moving them in next to a bar, you're moving them in next to a nightclub, you're looking to put money in your pocket by putting them in this situation. You are responsible for that noise reduction. And no one, no one in their right mind would say that it's fine, just let these people deal with whatever noise, let's not bother. Okay? That's wrong.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, the last thing I'll say for the time being is that this is the downtown mixed-use district, which includes residential use.
Thank you, Counselor.
I will note that there are no bars that directly abut residences in the downtown. They are all air-gapped, every single one. Now, I did have this conversation with Mr. Gary earlier, and he pointed to an establishment on Fletcher Street and Broadway. However, that's one instance where you have the entire building owned by the singular party. Okay? Not a question of putting in residences in a commercial area. The special permit requires, the burden is on the applicant to take those steps to avoid the impact.
Thank you. Moving forward, any others wishing to speak in opposition? In opposition? In opposition? Public hearing is now closed. Going to open it up to the board. Van?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you, I just want to take a minute and just thank all the people who spoke on behalf of this position, whether you're against or in favor. I know it's not always an easy thing, you know, and I totally hear and understand the comments by Counselor Gary and Counselor Wicker, and, you know, and the presentation by Mr. Noto and the comments by Mr. Petracas. You know, I think at the end of the day is, we're trying to do what's right by everyone, the city, the downtown, the, you know, the petitioner. You know, I think, I think major efforts were made to try to mitigate these issues with sound. I think, did they do all the way? I don't know, I'm not a sound expert either. You know, I do, I do feel that this can be worked out between, between the, you know, the owners and the abutters or the neighbors. You know, I know that, I think, in all fairness, everyone here is trying to be proactive and reactive to all the future issues or future problems. So I think, I think with me, Mr. Chairman, I, you know, I'll wait to see what my colleagues say, but overall, I think, you know, plans were made to do things the right way. You know, I would share the sentiments of one of the speakers, like, you know, let's have a concrete plan and detail and just share with everybody so everyone's aware, we're all on the same page, and we can move forward to keep downtown and the city of Lowell no thriving. So those are my comments, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Van. Sean?
Thank you through you, Mr. Chairman. I also want to thank all the people who spoke today, both for the petitionary and for the opposition. It's, this is a, this is a tough, tough situation that we're dealing with, where we have a well-established commercial business that has been a downtown fixture for several decades, and also trying to bring in residential units into a, to make the downtown even more vibrant. I know there's been a lot of back and forth, but I want to try to get some clarity on what's going on. And I guess through you, Mr. Chairman, to Attorney Wyker or Mr. Petracas or whoever wants to answer, probably Attorney Wyker. You're looking for a condition on decibel levels and a particular, is there a particular number of a decibel level you're, you're looking to be set that is below the city ordinance in order to, for a condition? I'm trying to understand, what is, what is it exactly that's being asked for a condition?
I think what we'd like, I mean, look, I know it's perfectly capable of establishing a 10-decibel level in a combat zone, because I've done it. And that's parked next to a tank parking lot with engines running. So it's certainly not difficult to do. It does require a little bit of effort. I don't think 10 is unreasonable, but this court, this board may want to go with a higher number. My concern is that this, if any level is set by this board, it should be such a level that it is not going to generate complaints by the occupants from the existing business continuing to operate in the manner in which it has operated before and will continue after. We want it to go in and be seamless, we want it to go in and be harmless, and we want the owners of the building to be responsible for the quality of life of the tenants and to avoid this conflict by defending and indemnifying. As I said, if the quality of workmanship is good, there won't be a noise complaint coming from a tenant. If the quality of workmanship is shoddy, there will be. So what I would ask is just require that the building owner and any subsequent development, association, or sale, or purchaser shall defend and indemnify neighboring businesses against any noise complaints or loss of business that result from curtailment of hours due to noise complaints. We've already had a suggestion by Mr. Gary, Attorney Gary, that the business should change its operation. And that was made while applying, and that's not in conformity with the law. We want to be good neighbors, we want the city to develop, we want things to go forward. We don't want it to go forward with Mr. Petracas having to pay so that Mr. Noto can profit. If Mr. Noto's business model is incapable of mitigating the sound and guaranteeing that it is kept that way, then his business model needs to change. I would note that there is insufficient information in the plans as to what sound mitigation is being taken. Statements about the floors were not addressed, while they're made here on the record, they are not enforceable because they're not addressed in the plans, nor are they addressed in the application.
Okay.
Statements about the wall. So I'm asking for, I sent a letter to this board.
Counselor.
On June 10th. I'm asking that 11 be put in place.
Excuse me.
Okay. I think you answered my question.
As the clerk is addressing, it is the board's time right now, and we understand it. The question at hand, which was a satisfactory decibel level, and I believe it was answered 10. So in order to move forward with the board and the remainder of the meeting, I think in fairness to everybody on both parties and all in chambers, we just comply with the answers and move on. We, we've already, we're already well aware of the other stipulations and the concerns and things noted.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I was trying to elaborate that I would deviate from the 10.
We certainly understand your point, as it's been well served several times. Thank you.
Thank you. So with that, I've got a couple questions. Attorney Gary, with regards to the plans, I believe you also said first that these are going to be rentals, not condos, correct?
I don't think that's been completely decided upon yet, Mr. Callahan, unless, unless, John, you know that for sure at this point in time?
No, no, we don't. I think, I think eventually condos, but in the beginning, probably rental.
Okay, because that gets back to some, a couple of my concerns here about, even though you haven't established that, because one of the mitigating factors that you put in, Mr. Noto, when your presentation was, you would have it put in the bylaws about letting future tenants or owners, I guess, if they're condos, know about the, what they're getting into, what they're moving into, the noise, the potential noise issues, and that, with that being said, I guess I'm going one of two ways. I mean, if you go in condos and that's going to be put in the bylaws, I guess that's something you got in writing, Attorney Wyker or Mr. Petracas, you have something in writing in the bylaws that are going to be recorded with the registry of deeds, it's on record. So you have something to that effect. If they're not going to be condos and they're going to be rentals, then my question would be, you're going to have onsite management, someone to be taking care of any other future complaints, I'm sure. Not only the police is going to be complaining to you, you'll probably, you'll probably get complaints too, or the onsite management, if that's what you're going to do as far as rentals are concerned. So, I mean, this is, we got a lot, we got a lot of stuff to deal with here, and I'm hoping we can come to some, I know you've done a lot to mitigate, we've had, we brought these issues up in the previous hearing, and it looks like a lot of, some movement's been done to mitigate these, especially flip-flopping the plans to have the two-bedrooms on, closer to the Shamrock side with the bed, with two, well, the two-bedroom apartments closer to Shamrock side with the bedrooms away from the walls. And it appears, you know, Mr. Naganga also notes on the plans as well that there's going to be soundproofing, sound insulation added to the bedroom walls. So some, it looks like some mitigation has been done. I get, let me just ask, you know, Counselor Gary, or Mr. Noto, or Mr. Miyaga, what are your thoughts on trying to see if we can mitigate and get it to a decibel level that's possibly?
You know, isn't, shouldn't, shouldn't our standard be the city ordinance? We comply with the city noise ordinance, which I, you know, I'm sure we do, but we already just demonstrated that the brick walls decrease the decibel level by, you know, almost cut it in half. Again, in addition to that, the bedrooms are moved to the center of the building with, with soundproofing to those walls. Now, we can certainly specify in any condition the, the soundproofing that is going to be that is going to be, you know, used for the wall, soundproofing. But, I mean, you know, I'm not exactly sure of the question, I guess. We're happy if it's a rental, we're happy to notify tenants by way of the lease that they're next door to a, you know, a bar or nightclub and, you know, there's noise associated with that use. You know, if it's condominium, there could be something similar, but we can't, you know, I don't know that we can police that through bylaws or a lease for that matter.
That's a good point, Attorney Gary. I actually was thinking about that as well. How can it be enforced?
And as far as the indemnification and whole harmless, that brings up all kinds of legal issues which we are not prepared to entertain. Simple as that.
I guess one other question I have also pertains to Mr. Patracas's request on just reviewing the soundproofing plans. Again, I don't know if that's something, is that something we can condition? Well, they have to be approved by DPD, and then that could be possibly shared with the abutters? Or, I don't know, Mr. Chairman, what are your thoughts?
I mean, I certainly think we can condition it as a supplemental package for review if it's in agreeance.
Is that something Attorney Gary that, or Mr. Noto?
Yes, we can agree to some soundproofing mitigation, but not soundproofing that's subject to approval of the neighbor.
Petitioner, correct.
Yeah, you're right, you're right.
You know, that's not how conditions work.
Yeah, the condition would, the condition, and it would be, my understanding, would be the sharing of the information. Wouldn't be an approval from the...
Well, it's approval by DPD.
Yeah, it'd be approval by DPD, but it would be a review of the documents and the soundproof in the process, not approval of the condition for the permits.
Yeah, that's what I meant, I'm sorry.
Right, and we could agree to soundproofing approved by DPD staff.
That's, okay, I think that's what I was really getting at. I'm sorry, I think it goes again more in the lines of Attorney, I mean, Mr. Patracas had mentioned about possibly reviewing the plans, but I mean, I think that's, that is something that could be, DPD, that could be shared with the abutters, but it's not subject to his approval. Is that Peter?
Sure, we can share the specifications when we get that, when we submit it to the DPD.
And could we have that compliance made a condition on the permit?
I'm sorry.
So that it is, might we have that compliance with all of this made as a condition on the permit so that any subsequent owners are still held to that same standard if it does go condominium?
I would, we can't make that, DPD's making the call and not Attorney Wyker.
Oh, I'm asking that the requirement from this on the special permit be that it comply with all DPD requirements for soundproofing.
Well, it would have...
And that, this board actually does have that specific authority.
I think that goes on saying.
Yeah, well, the problem is, it has to actually be said and be put on the record or else it's not enforceable. That's, I mean, that's the law. If it's not written, it's not enforceable. So if you don't put it on the condition, you're basically telling Mr. Patracas, yeah, yeah, yeah. So I'm looking to make sure he's protected by just having you put it on the record as a condition on the permit. So it will actually appear on any permit.
Attorney Gary, would you, would Mr. Noto be...
I think, I think what he's saying is, you know, you guys will propose a condition. We'll either go along with it or not, but if we go along with it, then it is part of the special permit and it will be in the, it will be recorded at the Registry of Deeds as a condition.
All right.
Just for a point of notice, and not to be disingenuous to anyone, the condition in itself is the compliance. To have a condition under condition seems to be unconditionally acceptable. So the attorneys are having an open, transparent conversation on the condition itself. To the credit of the counselors, the conditions will be enforced and complied once all records are bound by the deed. Thank you. Mr. Clark?
To that, that's all I have for now, Mr. Chairman. I'll listen to my fellow board members and see where we go from there. Thank you.
Thank you. Sean Dennis.
Three, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to ask John Noto and Anthony Naganga about the wall design behind the kitchens, bathrooms, and laundry room that abut that Purple Shamrock Dance nightclub brick wall. Is that area there going to be maintained as brick as well? Or would that make sense to do resilient channels and drywall to mitigate sound?
Hi, Dennis. This is Anthony. Sorry, before, I forgot to give my address. I'm an architect in Lowell. My company is Studio 26. I'm at 175 Carbo Street, Suite 100. Dennis, just to answer your question, our thought is that we'd leave the wall exposed in the living room and the kitchen. But the bathroom and the laundry, we will insulate that. Would actually have full studs and maybe a soundboard behind that as well.
Okay, so roughly a third of the wall is going to be developed anyway with sound deadening material to go beyond the 50 reduction decibel level that you've already achieved with the brick?
Yes.
So you're really only talking about roughly a third in each apartment or two-thirds of that entire length would be left with that 50-decibel reduction that we saw in the sound study that John Noto did?
That is correct.
Okay. And I think you also mentioned that you were going to add some kind of sound deadening board in the floor so that you would isolate the noise and vibration that way as well in the entire apartment?
Yes, that is correct.
You have done a pretty substantial, I think, amount of work here to understand what the noise impact is. And you've done a fair amount of work here to minimize the impact on the apartment users by moving the bedrooms to the center portion and isolating those, you know, like a room within a room, and then putting them on a raised sound deadening kind of material with the insulation to minimize any vibration. And then also located roughly a third of that wall already with sound mitigating material. So there's a substantial amount of work done in these plans already that I think we should be drawing a lot of focus on that Mr. John Noto and Anthony Naganga have already done that is substantial. It is an apartment, though, and people are downtown. There is going to be noise. And that's what our noise ordinance is all about, what's acceptable. And that's already established as far as what's acceptable. And I really feel strongly that we should go forward with this proposal. This is a great opportunity for more residential downtown. Everyone wants more residential downtown. Businesses thrive with more residential downtown. Even the Purple Shamrock would thrive with more residential. I can't see why this would be held up for any reason. This is an absolutely wonderful use of this structure and this building. Great layout, great ideas here. I am in strong, strongly in favor of this going forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Dennis. Mark?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you to Attorney Wyker. Let me hear, if you'd be so kind, let me hear the condition that you would propose on this petition.
I would propose the condition that the applicant seeking the financial benefit of the special permit to place residential units in a downtown mixed-use area by special permit should have a condition requiring that there be sufficient and adequate soundproofing to avoid any and all noise complaints by the tenants which will be placed there by the landlord. The landlord, in this case, is the applicant. This is for financial benefit, and I would ask that adequate soundproofing be put in place to avoid all noise intrusions that would result in complaint and that they guarantee the quality and extent of their work by agreeing to defend and indemnify such that even should they sell, any subsequent conversions to commercial condos, residential condos, will be bound by that requirement, that they maintain these units in such a state that there are no noise complaints. That would ensure that they comply with Section 4, or General Law 40A, Section 9. That's all. It's not a hard standard. If they're really going to do the noise mitigation, guarantee it. If not, tell me that we won't guarantee it because it's too risky and you want Nick to guarantee the risk. One of two people is going to bear this risk. Either the petitioner or the existing business owner. One of two people must bear this risk. I ask that this board place that risk squarely on the shoulders of the person seeking the financial benefit of deviating from what is otherwise permitted as a matter of right and seeking a special permit for their financial benefit. That's all. So I would ask that all noise reductions be listed in the plans and that a condition on the permit be that the interior decibel measurements with the windows closed should be adequately low as to avoid any complaints regarding noise from the abutting business during its licensed operating hours.
Apologize for interrupting. Tell me the acceptable decibel level. Let's cut to the chase here. Let's get both parties to agree on a decibel level and get this place developed, because we're all in favor of development, including your client, Mr. Patracas. I think he has legitimate concern, though. I think he has a very legitimate concern. He's trying to protect a well-established business. At the risk of sounding like a wise guy, you buy a house next to the train station. You can't complain about the trains coming roaring down the tracks. But by the same token, you purchase a property next to a train station. You're going to try to develop and market it and attract someone to make an investment there. Well, I would think it's incumbent upon that individual to take every extra measure of precaution to ensure that you can attract such an investor. So, you know, let's meet somewhere in the middle. You guys tell us what the acceptable decibel level is, and let's get it done.
And thank you, sir. I mean, I agree with you. Look, if somebody buys, if somebody buys a house next to a train station and complains about the noise, obviously, they have the right to go to court and complain. And after about $20,000 to $30,000 worth of litigation expense, the business owner will prevail. I don't want Mr. Patracas in the position of having to pay $20,000 to $30,000 every time one of Mr. Noto's tenants says my walls are too thin.
We're in agreement with you, sir.
So what I'd like to see, I'd like to start with 10 because I know that you can do 10 next to a tankyard in a combat zone. All right, but 40 is certainly acceptable.
Mr. Gary, what is your position with respect to an acceptable decibel level?
I think that we can agree, I think we've already provided mitigation, sound mitigation, by moving the units over and installing soundproofing in the walls and the flooring. I think we're well within any standards that the city requires. And we can agree to provide, to a condition that requires us to submit our soundproofing specifications to the city, to the professional planning staff for approval.
That sounds reasonable, Mr. Patracas. What do you say about that? You should have retained me.
Here goes a lectern, Mr. Patracas.
Basically, I'm in agreement with everyone. I think I've stayed in my position. I want to reach, I guess, again, just to reiterate. I like John, I like Anthony, I want them to be successful. At the same time that the commissioner stated, I'm just trying to protect myself, and I foresee problems down the line if I'm not guaranteed because someone's going to, in plain terms, someone will call the cops and say, geez, there's noise over there, and it might be a whole different board. God willing, I'm still alive five, six years from now, and then I'll have no recourse of action. And when Counselor Gary stated, well, you know, the acceptable sound levels, whatever, I understand what he's saying, but if I haven't had any problems for, you know, 26 years, and I have them now, then I'm saying, well, geez, I didn't have all these problems before, you know? So the analogy that was made about the train station or the airport, whatever, that's, I couldn't have made a better one myself, you know? So, you know, I'm willing to work with people, but like I said, I want to, you know, all I have is promises now, and I hear the things, whatever, and it sounds great. And I'm not saying that they're not going to do what they're saying. I just want, like Counselor Wyker said, I want something in writing or someone that protects me more than just a handshake and a, you know what I mean? A handshake and somebody's word, because I used to be like that, but I realize life doesn't work like that, you know what I mean? So, thank you.
I don't know if... So the city ordinance says the decibel level shall not exceed what? Who has the answer to that question?
John, you have the answer to that, don't you?
I do. I mean, if you read the ordinance, it was 50 decibels. So any sound in the Shamrock can't bleed over into the 95 market space at more than 50 decibels. And currently, you know, when Nick has his music at the allowed level of 95 decibels, we are below 50 in the 95 market street space. So I'm not exactly sure what we're fighting over. I had thought that it would be much higher and we would have to mitigate. But after making these measurements, we seem to be in line with the ordinance. And just to go above and beyond, we're going to do the mitigations that we talked about. So I think, I mean, you know, 10 decibels is ridiculously low. I mean, I'm not going to build a skiff. I'm not going to build a bunker, right? I mean, you know, a rainstorm is 40 or 50 decibels. You know, conversation is 60 decibels. So you're talking, 10 decibels is manifestly almost impossible in any, you know, any building other than a bunker or a sound studio. You know, people are going to, I want people to live there. I want people to enjoy living there. So, you know, right now, we are within the ordinance and we're going to mitigate to be a little bit better than the ordinance. But I don't, you know, I can't, I can't fully, you know, obviously indemnify the Shamrock from any activity that future people might want to do. I mean, I don't see how that's possible. But if everybody operates in good faith and follows the ordinance, I think there won't be any sort of defensible noise complaint. Thank you.
And it's your contention that as the building currently exists, the measures you've taken to ensure a certain decibel level exist currently and would protect your residents to a decibel level of 50? Is that what you're saying?
50, yes. If the Shamrock, if the music at the top floor of the Shamrock is within the allowed level of 95 decibels, I think 50 decibels on the other side is demonstrably possible. I think we measured it.
And you're not willing to go the extra yard that maybe takes some additional precautions to ensure that maybe the sound quality is better than 50?
Well, we did, right? We moved the bedrooms. We covered a third of the wall with additional soundproofing. We beefed up the soundproofing in the floor. And we're going to add soundproofing to the bedrooms, so the bedrooms will be particularly quiet. And then to make sure no outside noise from the street comes in, we're going to use double-pane windows, which I have in my condo now, which are quite effective. So these are all additional mitigations after meeting with Nick.
Is the aesthetic look of a brick wall more important than providing additional soundproofing?
I don't know. That's entirely up to me.
But wouldn't it be with you? You are the owner.
I am the owner, but I mean, I think, you know, I lived downtown. I lived downtown for 12 years. When my neighbor, you know, makes a smoothie, I hear his blender. So I think, I think there's just a level of noise that some people are willing to exist with. So I can't, I can't tell if a tenant or an owner, a future owner, would trade, you know, the brick... future owner, would, would trade, you know, the brick wall for an extra ten dB of sound reduction. I, I can't make that determination. Now, if, if in the future we need to do that, you could add sound mitigation later and lose the brick wall. I just, I'm not sure we need to make that decision now, because I feel confident that we are within this current existing sound ordinance.
You understand the protections that Mr. Petracas is looking to, to gain here, don't you?
I, not exactly. I mean, I'm not an attorney. I, I...
Neither am I, sir.
Okay, so I, I'm not...
It would seem to me that his concerns are reasonable.
They're not unreasonable. And I want the shamrock to succeed, and, and I'm hoping to rent to his customers.
So the only, if we were gonna include a decibel level, the only thing, the only level we can use is what the city ordinance currently says?
That's correct. Any other?
No further questions, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah. Any other, any other requirements would then put deference against this board, and it's not within our purview as the zoning board of appeals. We cannot, could not put another layer on the existing ordinance for decibel. I mean, fifty is, is, is the requirement. What we have, and what we have is forty-seven. I think the condition where, I think the condition in itself is a valued condition, I think. I think the petitioner and counselor are open to providing that information for review once submitted and approved by DPD. It's not, this board cannot engage in overriding their authority on petitions that are adversely against the ordinance in the, in the zoning board itself. I have my own comments and concerns, and I, I won't, I won't get into that, because, are you, are you done, Mr. Mark? Thank you. But I'd like to move on, because the board is still in discussion, and Robert, the floor is yours.
Mr. Chairman, I request to recuse myself. I have past dealings with one of the parties in the petition, so I would prefer to recuse myself.
Thank you for that notice, Robert. Now it's on to me. So there's been a lot of, a lot of discussion, a lot of back and forth. I think there's been some positive, open communications here. As I look to, as I look past and forward, I can, I can see Mr. Petracas' concern. I mean, if he's getting calls for noise levels to the Lowell Police Department, it's gonna adversely affect him, adversely affect him within the License Commission. He's gonna be, he's gonna be put in a position that he hasn't been due to this type of conversion. However, he's also very open, and he's very transparent in his position. He has been in the business for twenty-six years. He is in the downtown. It is DMU. You know, cat's in the cradle, we want both things here. And I think, I think both parties are looking to end that. But I, I think that the condition, in my opinion, is a little steep. I think, I've been in Lowell all my life, I've never seen a tank downtown. I understand, I've, I've been in nightclubs downtown, it does get loud. It's louder now as I, as I age. But I do have a value concern on both sides. So my, my concern would be first and foremost that the board oversteps its authority in this petition. My second concern is towards the business owner, particularly in light of his dedication and commitment to the city over twenty-six years. What I think is loud, I can tell you, a lot of people tell me isn't loud. I'm very, I'm, I'm very sensitive with my hearing. So I'd hate to see you in a position that, you know, a, a low, tolerable person comes into the building and, you know, they hear a blender, and now they're calling, they're calling for a noise ordinance. Downtown is loud. You know, I, I frequent downtown, it's loud. I think the mitigations have value. I think the sticking point here, in my opinion, is the brick wall. Now, every downtown mill building, outskirts, the exchange, they all keep that interior brick facade, interior facade for aesthetics. The movement of the bedrooms, I think, is, is, is a good gesture. I think the, the deafening reduction on the floorboards and the like. I guess my question would be, if we're looking to stay at forty-seven, which I believe was, was, was witnessed. Now, I don't know what was playing, I don't know if it was a DJ, I don't know if it was a band. I, I do know that, you know, that's, you know, that's the business that's downtown. I guess my question is, is there anything, and I, you know, I, I'm not looking to make additional requirements here, but is there anything that can be done on that interior wall with additional soundproofing, framing it in, coloring it brick? I, I've seen those interior soundboards in restaurants where they look like pitches, maybe those, those, that, those are options. I think there are some options here. I think it's, I think it's improbable for us to move forward and, and, you know, get into negotiations on decibel numbers that are in clear violation of the ordinance itself. This won't be good for either party, because it's just, it's just gonna hold. So I guess Attorney Gary, the mitigations have been substantial, and I believe the discussions have been in agreeance with those. We're not gonna get to ten, Counselor, it's just, it's impractical, and I don't think it's, it's fairness. I, I can see if, you know, we're not stationed next to the Army National Guard here. And I also gotta remind people that there's a garage across the street, there's tree, there's street traffic noise, there's outside cafes now. I'm at, I'm at a tough, I'm at a tough position here, because I, it's hard, we're trying to predict the future and hold a standard that we're not allowed to hold. And we don't know who's coming in there. So Counselor Gary, is there something that your team could look at on those decor walls if they're, and I'm just, and I'm just, you know, I'm just trying to, and I'm in agreeance. I mean, you know, we always pride ourselves, and we, well, we discuss us, ourselves on priding ourselves on building up the downtown. And I'm, and I'm sure both residents and businesses understand where they're, where they're at. Because without residents, we don't have lunch cafes, and we don't have breakfast, and we don't have Bud Lights and, and wings. And that, that's all important to the socioeconomic vitality of the downtown. So Counselor Gary, is there, I think the, you know, and I, I believe, I believe the opposing members agree there has been some mitigation. And it's hard for anyone to sit up here and say that, you know, if Felix moves in and he, it's loud, he's gonna call the police. I mean, the insurances that, that, you know, I know Mr. Petracas is looking for, I, I agree with him a hundred percent, because those dial-ups are all gonna be a negative impact on his rating with the board, with the license, alcohol licensing board. So without believing in that issue is, if, if, one, we can't enforce an agreement on a, on a condition that's approved by an opposer of the petition. That has to just be reviewed and submitted by DPD. However, providing that information is well within the purview, it's information, it's public document. I don't know, Counselor, is there any other?
Well, I guess it just seems to me that the exposed brick wall and the open ceiling is a key architectural aesthetic feature of a downtown building, and particularly here in the Mill City. So you hate to cover that up. You know, we are, you know, it's not entirely exposed, we're leaving some of it, we're covering some of it. John, Anthony, any thoughts on that end?
I mean, my, my thought, Counselor, I agree. I mean, I agree. If I was gonna, if I was gonna buy downtown, and I was gonna be in a mill building, I would want those brick walls exposed, I would want those high exterior beams, it's part of the tradition of the city. You know, my, my thought is, is there, if there was a framing of it, that's just another piece in good faith, I think. And again, I, I'm not a sound expert, but I am a sensitive hearing expert. Ask my wife. That's just one of the questions I have.
Anthony, is there anything along those lines that, any type of compromise where we maintain the exposed brick wall, but, but add some level soundproofing?
I'm, I'm conflicted here, because I feel like we're bearing the, the blunt of, of this board. You know, we, I think we've done a lot, and all that we are doing is just to try and keep the exposed brick wall. So, you know, to come out of here with a compromise like this, I'm not sure where this is gonna end, because we're gonna have noise from the street itself, right? Every, so often the, the, the ambulance or the fire truck is going up against the street. You just mentioned about, and we did talk about this the other time, there's the noise that comes from the street itself, not even the nightclub, you know, when, when the bars close at one o'clock or two o'clock in downtown. So I, I think we, we're doing enough, and I'm confident that at least in the sleeping rooms, we're gonna have a very low decibel level.
I would agree with you. If I could, members of board, my concern is that I've heard a lot of the conversation now transitioning away from a discussion about building market rate housing into now building condominiums for sale to future buyers. So I'm, just wanna be clear that this is a landlord-tenant situation. Can the landlord provide sufficient amelioration? I mean, this was not before this zoning board regarding condominiums and subsequent owners, but that has come out tonight, that that might be in the works. So my concern is that this has to be judged by a landlord-tenant situation and the landlord's obligation to take steps to ensure that they don't create a situation that is noxious to their potential tenants.
Thank you. Well, I have, I, I voiced my concerns, and, and, you know, it's, in fairness to both parties, it's, I think we're, I think we're close.
Might I suggest that we continue to discuss and see if we can reach an agreement between us?
Continuance is, is in the, in the hands of the petitioner, not the opposition counsel, and/or the board. Is there any other comments or concerns by the board?
Three, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. McCarthy, welcome back.
Well, thank you. I, I would just want to ask Anthony, if we extended the sound mitigation through the kitchens on both sides, we'd basically be eliminating another eight or nine feet or in each, in each apartment, that would be a substantial addition on that wall. Is it really critical to have the brick exposed in the kitchens?
I'm, I'm certainly happy to take a look at that. And again, I don't know whether, for example, doing the sound on that wall probably up to the top of the, the wall cabinets, rather than, again, going full height, that's probably a good compromise that we would likely entertain.
I think it'd be worth doing as a compromise, because it would actually increase that sound mitigation on that wall substantially, because the kitchens in each apartment are roughly eight or ten feet each. So that's, that's a good, good dimension of, of increase on that wall.
Okay.
So maybe the condition is that we revise the plans to show sound mitigation in the kitchens, as well as the laundry and toilet rooms along the wall shed with the, with the purple shamrock. I think that would be agreeable.
So we've, we've taken another step forward with additional
Yep.
soundproofing and mitigations throughout this, this process. Any other comments or concerns by the board? So we are looking at a mitigation, additional mitigation exclusive of the previous mitigation set forth. Counselor Gary, is that something you open to?
Yes, I, I think it is. As Anthony suggested, that's, that would be acceptable. So as of right now, we are agreeing to soundproof the walls, add some soundproofing to the floors and the areas that Mr. McCarthy just mentioned. And so we're willing, we're, we would be agreeable to a condition that requires us to provide those specifications to the DPD staff for approval.
And you're also open to providing that to Mr. Petracas?
Of course, simultaneously with the...
Simultaneously for his informational use.
Yes.
I mean, certainly, we all must look at this, you know, from twenty thousand feet, from twenty-six years back with, with the large investment that was made. You've been there. Mr. Petracas has been there the entire time. He's employed citizens of, of the city. He's done a lot of good work for the community, and his involvement in fundraising. He, you know, he's a prolific businessman, and that, those are his concerns. I would hope that the pettiness that we now live in would not be the subject of his detriment when it comes to noise. I mean, the noise ordinance is there for a reason. You know, unfortunately, the, the police officers on, on the line are gonna be subject to the phone calls from dispatch. I, I don't want to overstep the board in my, in my purview, but, you know, I, I kind of feel as though there's gotta be some, we have to look in light of, we can't predict the future here, but, you know. I certainly don't want the business owner to be subject to overzealous noise zealots, if you will, without being disingenuous to anyone, including myself. Because it's hard enough to maintain a business in the city, it's hard enough to maintain your, your beverage and alcohol license within the city with all the rules and the regulations and the laws, and to have noise come at you in a violation that may bring forth an issue in front of the Beverage Commission is extremely concerning to me. It, it really is. I enjoy downtown, and I don't mind the noise, but I don't live there. I may, but I'm comfortable with this additional mitigation. I'm hopeful that, that we all are, and we can move forward with this, because I think that there's an opportunity for additional residents to enjoy your property, your outside cafe, your, your indoor, and, and the continued success that you've had there. It's, it's not unnoticed. I have great confidence in, in the system, and I think that we're looking at a third, third or fourth, I believe, mitigation in soundproofing. I wish I could sit here on public record and guarantee that no one's gonna be calling the Lowell Police Department, but I, I've watched the Licensing Commission, and quite frankly, some of these noise violations are a little over the top. People gotta let people live. Bands make noise, people make noise getting in and out of cars. So let's, let's take a look at this condition. I think the plan that'd be submitted for approval once reviewed, we're not gonna get to that ten, and we can't under requirement. If there was something that allowed us to give further insurances, I think we, we would, that would be the main, would be, could be a main focus of this. But I, I think, you know, I can only speculate that these mitigations are better than none. It's not gonna fully guarantee, you know, I'm just gravely concerned about. And it's uncontroll, it's uncontrollable on both sides of the aisle here. We want the business downtown, we want the residents downtown, we want them having a cheeseburger at your fine establishment, a couple Bud Lights, play a little Kino, listen to the music, but we don't want them adversely affecting your day-to-day operations after your commitment to the city for 26 years. It's probably one of the most, you know, like I said, we're cat in the cradle here. And again, the diligence that you've taken, Mr. Patakas, to, to ensure your business is safe for your family and your future is evident. But sincerely, those, those future assurances, I don't think any one of us can ensure to you, unfortunately. It, it's extremely disheartening because people, I, I better stop. But I, I think the project overall is, is a good project. I think, I think these mitigations will be helpful upon review and I'm, I'm hopeful that we've all seen the benefits of businesses like yours and the benefits of residents coming downtown. And it's kinda one of those catch-22s. We can't always wanna be a downtown business residential district, then having, you know, the inability to finalize. And I don't think that, that should be beared on an existing businessman of 26 years, nor do I think it should be put on developers trying to develop to the downtown. So, any other comments or concerns? If I could have Mr. Clerk read a motion and have a discussion with counsel?
So, I wanna make sure we're clear on the conditions. The condition is for the applicant to submit for review and approval, soundproofing plans, review and approval by DPD courtesy copy being sent to via butter for, just for his informational purposes. And those plans are to include sound mitigation on the kitchen, bathroom and laundry rooms that are in the apartments next to the blue shamrock.
Counselor Gary, are you in agreeance with those conditions?
We are. I'm not sure, was, were the bedrooms mentioned there?
Uh, I'm sorry, wait.
Mr. Callahan, did you mention the bedrooms? I'm not sure if you did or not.
Soundproofing of the bedrooms.
Oh, and soundproofing, well, it's on the plan, the soundproofing of the
Yeah, okay.
Bedrooms is on the plans anyways.
Okay.
Right?
Yes, correct.
I do have a concern with the soundproofing to be identified?
Soundproofing is identified on the bedrooms, on the plans.
It's not identified on the floors.
We're actually gonna submit new plans, submit final plans for DPD, to DPD for their review and approval. Well, let's just, we'll just say it includes all soundproofing of all areas, including what we discussed about sound mitigation on the kitchen, bathroom and laundry rooms of the apartments next to the blue shamrock.
Okay. My concern is that before those, if the permit is approved before the plans are submitted to DPD, our clock starts to run, in which case we have to file a legal action while we wait on these plans. And rather than do that, why don't we just have the special permit not to issue until such time as the plans have been submitted and approved?
I, I can definitely check with the law office. I'm not
That would avoid my office having to file a lawsuit simply to get an injunction while we wait on this to happen anyway. It would save us, save all parties a few thousand dollars.
If it's conditioned, if it's conditioned on the submission of the plans
And it's conditioned of approval of the
Then the approval does, the, the special permit wouldn't issue until the plans were reviewed and approved by DPD.
Right.
That's the condition.
Yeah. So, so that they wouldn't be able to pull their permit from the building office until DPD, so they put a hold on the permit in our system and they wouldn't be able to pull it until we had lifted that hold on it, you know?
And so, the actual permit would not be issued until after that?
Yeah.
The special permit?
That's correct, yes.
And the, so the granting date of the special permit would not be until after that approval?
Correct.
That's the condition, the, the special permit is potentially, we haven't taken a vote yet, would be approved on the condition of the submission and approval of the soundproofing plans by DPD.
Okay, so it's a contingent special permit approval?
Correct, yes.
Any other, any other, any other condition would, would not, is not authorized under this board, it would, it would promulgate to a suit itself, to be frank. So, no, the, the condition itself is a, is a conditional, is a, a conditional contingent of the petition and the special permit and variance. Nothing can move forward until the approval of the DPD.
All right, I understand. Thank you for that clarification.
Thank you.
So, do we get, we have that condition, Peter? Okay. So, with that, if we're ready, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, with that being said.
I'll make a motion on
Make a motion?
Make a motion on ZBA 2021-10 for special, well, with two votes, one for special permit and one for the variance. We'll do special permit under Article 12 for 95 Market Street for approval to renovate and redevelop the second floor on existing building into three, three residential apartments with the previously mentioned condition.
May I have a second?
I'll second the motion, Mr. Chairman.
Seconded by Mr. Vice Chair. That being said, may I have a roll call?
Chairman Perrin.
Denied.
Vice Chair Peck.
Approve the conditions.
Member Callahan.
Denied.
Member Brier.
Denied.
Member Niroga.
Accuse.
Member McCarthy. Member McCarthy.
Approve the condition.
There, Mr. Chairman, I can make a motion on ZB 2021-10 for 95 Market Street for variance approval under Section 6.1 for off-street parking requirement with the previously mentioned condition.
May I have a second?
I'll second the motion, Mr. Chairman.
Seconded by, by Mr. Vice Chair. May I have a roll call?
Chairman Perrin.
Denied.
Vice Chair Peck.
Approve the conditions.
Member Callahan.
Denied.
Member McCarthy.
Approve the conditions.
Member Brier.
Denied.
Member Niroga.
Accuse.
So, the petition before us was denied. We'll move on to our next continued business. Thank you
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you for everybody's input and attending. We appreciate your time and concern on this matter. Moving, thank you, sir. Moving forward on the new business, we will be taking out of order at request professional requests. We will move to ZBA 2021-26 for variance Rick Train 171 Lakeview Ave, Section 5.1, Section 6.1. Rick Train has applied to Lowell zoning board of appeals seeking variance approval to convert an existing commercial structure into a single-family residence. The property is located in the traditional neighborhood multifamily TMF zoning district and requires variance approval under Section 5.1 for lot area per dwelling unit, minimum lot area, minimum side yard setback, minimum yard front, yard setback, Section 6.1 for relief from off-street parking requirements for any other relief required on Lowell zoning ordinance. Counselor Gary, if you may?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I appreciate you taking the matter out of order. I apologize for anybody, anybody on the agenda tonight that's inconvenienced. Again, for the record, again, for the record, my name is John Gary, L.A. offices of Gary &amp; Gary LLC, 32 Church Street, Lowell, Mass. I represent the applicant, Rick Tron, who is with us tonight. Also with us tonight is Hushman Dafshah of Taj Engineering. Mr. Tron is the owner of 171 Lakeview Avenue and is proposing to convert an existing commercial structure from its former use as a barroom to a single-family residence for the use as a principal residence for he and his family. Property is located in the traditional neighborhood multifamily zoning district and consists of approximately 3,415 square feet of land. Neighborhood most, is mostly consists of residential dwellings, whether it be a single-two family or multifamily or condominium for that matter. There are also many businesses that support the neighborhood, small businesses that support the neighborhood. A single-family residence is an allowed use within the TMU zoning district, however, because Mr. Tron is converting the property from a commercial use to a residential use, Mr. Tron needs relief for many of the dimensional requirements of Section 5.1 of the zoning bylaw. So, specifically, Mr. Tron will require relief of the land area per dwelling unit, minimum lot area, minimum side yard setback and minimum front yard. Since there's no off-street parking associated with this property, Mr. Tron will also require relief from Section 6.1 for off-street parking for two off-street parking spaces, as is currently no off-street parking associated with this property. The property is located on a corner lot, however, and there is plenty of on-street parking available. In addition, Mr. Tron intends to seek a resident parking sticker for one spot outside of this property. Based on the DPD comments, my client went back to the drawing board late last week and modified our previously submitted plans. So, the revised plans that hopefully made it to your, your desk or computer are dated July 22nd and hopefully that's what you have in front of you. Mr. Dafshah will go through the changes with you in detail in a few minutes, but generally the proposed layout calls for a single, a single-level ranch-style living consisting of three bedrooms and one and a half baths, along with a large living space and kitchen, kitchen. As I mentioned, we're receipt of the planning department comments and I'd like to take a few minutes to go through those comments. So, I believe comments one and two have already been addressed. Comment three speaks to the deficiencies of the initial floor plan. So, the revised floor plan hopefully covers those deficiencies. For example, all, all exterior windows are to be replaced now with double-hung windows. All bedrooms do have windows, the master bath, master bedroom has, has walls and the existing doorway in the master bedroom is gonna be blocked off and infilled. So, there'll ultimately be three doorways associated with this property. Comment number four asks if there will be changes to the rear of the property, which is where the only open space is. Mr. Tron is proposing to replace that walkway with grass. And comment number five asks the board to consider the long-term consequences of the conversion to a single-family residence. I would suggest that the conversion will act to stabilize this corner of the neighborhood in that we are removing the possibility of any commercial use that is not compatible with the neighborhood. So, for example, the, the bar that was previously occupying this property. It also suggests that the vast majority of the surrounding properties are residential, whether that be in the form of a condominium unit, single-family home or multifamily home. So, the conversion of this property from a former barroom to a single-family residence is the most compatible use with the neighborhood. Mr. Fuller also suggests in the comments that there may be issues obtaining a building permit with the current design. We, we hope that the revised design alleviates those concerns. The engineering department mentions that the sidewalk should be replaced and that there's a pre-existing encroachment of a half a foot into the building property. The plan shows where the, where the applicant is proposing to, to replace the sidewalk and that half-foot encroachment, I imagine, has been there since the building's been around. Ultimately, though, due to the size, location and shape of the lot as opposed to other lots in the neighborhood, the applicant does have a hardship to support his request for variance. In addition, the relief sought, sought can be granted without substantial detriment for the public good or without nullifying or derogating from the intent of the zoning for this district. So, at this point, I'd like to hand the meeting off to Mr. Dafshah, who will go through the details of the revised plan and then we're, of course, happy to answer any questions of the board of the public. Thank you.
Thank you.
Dafshah?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and, and board members. My name is Hushman Dafshah from Taj Engineering LLC in Lowell. In compliance with the comments received from DPD and the engineering department, let me start, if you may, with the site plan and go from outside of the building towards inside. The comment from engineering department was the sidewalk on easterly side of Coburn Street, some of the existing granite curb in that section, as is shown on the plan, that area is depressed and settled. So, we are proposing to remove and reset in kind all those granite curbs with six-inch reveal using vertical granite curb type 4A, which is a requirement of the City of Lowell Engineering Department, starting from the end of the section of the concrete sidewalk all the way to where the existing granite, depressed granite curb ends. So, that is about, that's a considerable length, is about 40, over 40 feet. And then, of course, the sidewalk will be rebay, repaved, subbase will be placed, compacted per the city's specifications and repaved to the new grade. Moving in, starting from the floor plan and starting from Lake Avenue, first and foremost, the door from the master bedroom to Lakeview Ave, the existing door, will be closed and the wall framing and exterior texture will match again in kind the existing nature, the existing texture and shape of the current wall. The windows are placed, four windows are placed for master bedroom facing Lakeview Ave and these windows are three feet by four, four feet, nine inches high, Anderson double-hung, the specification is given on the plan, good quality windows. And then, coming again westerly towards Coburn Street, two new bedrooms are, next to each other, are proposed and also each, each bedroom will have two windows towards Lakeview Ave, same, same kind of window as the master bedroom. The, these bedrooms, individual bedrooms will have, of course, their own closets and just a standard, normal bedrooms, nine by 15 and a half feet each one inside. Then, the main entrance is right at the corner of Lakeview and Coburn, that will stay, stay as it is. The way the floor plan laid out, as you enter the living room and privacy, when, even when you leave the door open, the privacy is maintained, you don't have a direct look and a line of sight right into the, into the living space. The living room has also four windows that opens to Coburn Street. The layout of the kitchen is shown where the sink goes, where the appliances would go and we left one egress door from kitchen open to the backyard, just egress as a, as a second egress, a safety measure. And then, the main bathroom and shower, which is, has its own door to the other bedrooms and to the master bedroom. And then also, there is a half bath in between the kitchen and the master bath, full bath. There is a smaller storage office space in the southeastern corner of the building that has got a sliding door to, to the outside, to the backyard. With that, if any questions, I'll be more than happy to answer.
Thank you, sir. We appreciate your information.
My pleasure.
That being said, counsel, are any, any other comments at this time for public hearing?
None, no, none from the applicant. We'll wait to hear from the public and the board.
Thank you, counsel. That being said, I'd like to open up to the public. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? In opposition? In opposition? That portion of public hearing now is closed. Anyone wishing to speak in favor? In favor? In favor? That portion of public hearing is now closed. Like to open up to the board, Sean?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I understand, this is, this is an ambitious I, I understand, this is, this is an ambitious uh attempt of the use of the property, and I get it. Um, but I don't know, I don't know, it just kinda seems a strange layout. It used to, it's a former bar. I, I appreciate the fact that the previous plans had the, you know, you had the layout with the bedrooms in the middle of the, of the layout with no natural lighting reflecting on the bedrooms at all, and I, I believe that was brought to the attention, and then I know that was brought to the attention in the comments, um, mainly by the Building Commissioner as well. Um, and I appreciate the fact that you've tried to repurpose it and put the bedrooms on the side, but it's a little, a lot of relief that's being requested, especially my, one of my main concerns is in the, the yard setbacks. Uh, I'm actually looking at the plans, and I'm, I'm trying to get an understanding of how the, the rear, you wanna call it a rear yard or a side yard? I don't, I don't know what we can really call it in the back. Um, it only provided us with, I, I don't see what the layout is as far as the dimensions on how far it is from the building to the property line. You got a stockade fence that's running right in the middle of it, and then outside of the property line. I don't know, Attorney Gary or the applicant, do you, I mean, wanna speak, speak to that, uh, those layouts?
Well, I, I think the stockade fence is an encroachment from a neighbor um that, you know, is allowed, has been allowed to exist there.
Okay.
Hushy, I, can you tell what, so I know that the distance on the um, on the Coburn Street side from the building to the, to the backyard is four-point-two-five feet. You know, it looks like the far side, the opposite side of that is, is at least double that.
Yes, it starts from Coburn Street, four-point-two-five feet, and opens up, by the time it gets to the other end, it's over twelve feet.
Okay, so what's, what are the plans for that stockade fence in the back? Are you gonna tell the neighbor that he's, to take it off the land? I mean...
We, we have that right. I mean, we could also coexist with the neighbor.
Yeah, but I'd like to, if, if we're gonna convert this into a residential area, I mean, we'd like to give the, the person who's gonna live there as much, you know, green space as they can possibly obtain. I mean, it doesn't seem fair to, for us to approve plans that provide for a stockade fence to run in the middle of, middle of the property, uh, that would go to the detriment of whoever's gonna be living there. So...
Understood, Mr. Callahan. The, the applicant is, is well aware that there's not a lot of um outdoor space. He likes the urban living, living style. Um, he, I mean, that's why he chose this building. We realize it's a unique conversion from a, um, from a barroom to a single-family residence. I questioned him about that myself, but, you know, he, he, ultimately, I think the final plan here is a, is a good design. I realize that there's relief required, but it's all pre-existing uh conditions, uh that, you know, the building's been there for a long, long time. Um, that, you know, the applicant likes to be able to, you know, shut down the house when he goes away and not worry about too much on the outside.
Okay.
Uh, similar to, you know, a condominium for that matter.
So, so, so Attorney Gary, it's your client's intention? He's gonna reside there? He's not renting it out? He's not...
He's, this is his principal residence.
Okay.
For he and his family.
Okay. Now, it begs the question, like, I mean, as I said, good fences make good neighbors. Now, it begs the question, do we condition this on removing, having that stockade fence removed? Well, I, that would be at his leisure, I guess, right?
It would be. I mean, you know, something he, you know, he, he wants to be a good neighbor, he's not gonna force it, you know, there's a process to doing that. We'd have to give the neighbor notice, and approach and show them the plan and go through that process.
Yeah, I hate to see potential adverse possession issues come up later on in the future as well, so...
Yeah.
Hmm. Okay. All right, um, you know, and I'm gonna listen to my fellow board members on um what their thoughts are, just uh, again, I appreciate the, the reconfiguring of the plans from what was previously submitted. Uh, it is an unusual layout, going from a, and I guess the other question becomes, and I think that was brought up by DPD, was uh converging, converting a formerly commercial building use to residential, which sometimes you, you do it once, you can't go back. Um, so, I don't know. Um, I don't have any further questions or comments right now. I'll listen to my fellow board members. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Robert.
Um, Mr. Chairman, this looks like a project that's gonna repurpose an area that has been dealt with blight, you know, that property has been, has been there and unoccupied for a long time, so I see how we could repurpose the space, uh, but I had a couple of questions. Have you done a stormwater drainage mitigation study on this? Uh, has DPD looked at that in terms of stormwater?
Uh, so it is, uh, has been brought to the attention of the stormwater team. I don't know, so, um, I don't know if my colleague that's working on this uh project has put them in touch with the engineers over in the stormwater yet, but that's usually standard practice for us. I know it was on the agenda for the last stormwater meeting we attended with them.
Yeah, I seen that, uh, you know, the, the roof is very close to the sidewalk there, so, you know, it would be nice to get a stormwater down there. Uh, other than that, you know, um, I think it's a viable project. I think we're repurposing the space there, and uh, it looks like the, the petitioner is gonna live there, so I, I would, I would, I would support the petition. Thank you.
Thank you, Robert. Man?
Uh, through you, Mr. Chairman. I, I actually think I agree, Mr. Noro Bay. It's, this is a good reuse and repurpose of this um property, um, you know, converting into um a residential use. You know, I, I do think that there's a lot of relief kind of requested by the petitioner. Um, you know, I, I do, I do think, um, you know, it is a tight area, like in a corner lot between a main street and a side street, so that there is some uh relief to, to be considered there as well. Um, you know, and I do think there's one or two off-street parking, and then one little back driveway that probably could fit a car. Um, so I, I do think the relief um is, is hefty, but I, I do believe that the, the conversion from this commercial to residential use is a good repurpose of essentially a, you know, an abandoned uh bar, restaurant, pub. Um, but, but on a side note, and obviously this, this won't affect my decision either way, uh, I, I had my first beer there when I was twenty-one, so, you know, I am sad to see it convert from a, from a bar or restaurant, pub to, to a, you know, residence, but it, it adds to the housing stock, which is needed in the city of Lowell, the, um, you know, for the housing, um, housing crunch that everyone's in. So overall, I think this is a good project. Those are my comments, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I don't know, this is my old stomping grounds. This is the neighborhood I grew up in. I, I just can't envision a single-family home being located here. I, I really can't get my, my head around it. However, we have an investor here who's looking to make this his primary residence. Who am I to place a value judgment on where he should reside? I can tell you this, it would be a market improvement to the neighborhood and to that area. It has become a real eyesore. Uh, the days of a, a successful bar in that area are gone. The last several attempts have all proven to be unsuccessful. So maybe it's time for me to open my eyes and maybe have some vision for what the property could become, instead of what it's been allowed to deteriorate into. So, I don't know, less for two evils, I'd be in favor of repurposing this building and offering this gentleman an opportunity to come the lowest interval and raise his family. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Dennis?
Through you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I'd like to um echo Sean's concerns with the amount of relief being asked for here. Um, I, I saw the, the relief um regarding the setbacks, um, especially front yard and side yard setbacks are, are enormous. The other relief, I don't have quite as much an issue with, but then I thought the option would be to tear it down and build something from scratch, which would be unfortunate that we couldn't repurpose a building. I think it's not necessarily an icon of the neighborhood, but it's been there for quite a while, and to repurpose something that substantial, I think, would be better than tearing it down. So, um, that's how I kinda came around to the idea that this relief being asked for, for the setbacks, made sense, because we're actually not tearing down a structure that's perfectly reasonable to be used, even though quirky as a residence. And so, I think I'd like to um see this happen, and I'd like to support this. Um, I do think that side yard, so I think that neighbor behind you has a very large uh travel trailer that they park there, and so I don't think they could still do that if you changed the fence. Um, at least that's been my experience with going by there. I think there's a use for that side yard, so um maybe uh backing off on that condition um and let that fence be something that kind of works its way out uh through the, the neighbors talking to each other. Um, but I think I'd like to support this. Thank you.
Thank you, Dennis. Uh, certainly, if um, if you look at the history of this building, it, it has always been um a, a local business watering hole, what, what you like. If, if I would've thought that I'd be sitting here in twenty-twenty-one, uh, after spending uh my entire life in the city and, and uh knowing that, that area, that it would be turned into a single-family, I, I would too have to agree with uh Mr. Briere that my eyes are open to that, uh, you know, to Mr. Tron's credit, he wants to repurpose a building and make it a single-family home. It's gonna be open and spacious, it's gonna add tax revenue. Um, certainly, um, every, every, every residence is, is needed in the city and have a continued um, another generation of, of families growing up in Senegal is always, always a valued treasure, so I think the relief is, is large, but I also think that the commitment um from the petitioner to this project in the city is, is large as well. So I, I'm in support as well. I, I don't see, um, the green space is the green space, he's, he's certainly understanding of it. Uh, the interior is gonna be um open enough, so I'm sure he'll, he'll make do. As far as the condition, no, there's no condition, so the fence line is gonna be sought through neighbor negotiation, which would be great. So any other comments or concerns from the board?
Uh, Mr. Three, Mr. Chairman. No, I'm, a couple of questions, actually, about the layout. I was just looking at it again. Attorney Gary, um, or maybe a client can answer this. What are, what are the thoughts about, or is, I mean, this, is, the wall between the dining room, kitchen, and the living room, is that load-bearing? Or were there thoughts about opening that up to be like one open concept for living, kitchen, dining space? Uh, just kinda seems that maybe that would probably work better.
Hushy, are you able to answer that question?
The, I haven't done any structural inspection of the, of the structural framing of the building, but if that wall is load-bearing, um, it can be supported, it can be designed. Necessarily, a structural component, beam and post can be put in the wall to, um, to leave the living room open as shown.
Okay. I don't know, it just seemed like a, probably a better, better use if that wall was, if that, that was created as an open space more, um, 'cause it looked kinda weird, too, looking at it, that there's a, I mean, it just caught my attention when I was looking at the new plans and I saw, like, looking at the basement, 'cause my, my, my next question was also gonna be about the basement, like, how large the basement is because of the storage and, and whatnot, and what, what's, what's down there, but, um, but then I noticed that door that's between the living room and the ba, and the dining kitchen area, so, but, um, not a big deal. I'll, I'll, I guess I'll leave it at whatever the, whatever Mr. Tron's uh pleasure is with regards to it. It was just a, just something that caught my eye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments or concerns from the board? None being noted? That being said, Mr. Corrick may have a motion.
Through you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to make a motion for ZBA twenty-twenty-one dash twenty-six for one-seventy-one Lakeview Avenue for variance approval under section five-point-one for lot area per dwelling unit, minimum lot area, minimum side yard setback, minimum front yard setback, and section six-point-one for off-street parking to convert an existing commercial structure to a single-family residential building.
May I have a second?
Second motion.
Second, Mr. McCarthy. May I have a roll call, please?
Chairman Perrin?
Approve.
Vice Chair Peck?
Approve.
Member Callahan?
Approve.
Member McCarthy?
Approve.
Uh, Member Briere?
Approval.
Member Noro Bay?
Approved.
So you've been unanimously approved. We wish you the best of luck with your position.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Members of the board, we appreciate the courtesy of taking us out of order.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Moving forward, under new business, ZBA twenty-twenty-one dash twenty-three for a variance, Maria and Avellino Di Agrella at thirty-three Boston Road, section four-point-three, point-five subsection four. Uh, the Di Agrelas have applied to the Lowell zoning, Lowell Board of Appeals for a variance approval to legalize an existing garage that was constructed off the benefit of a building permit and does not meet the required ten-foot setback from the house and five-foot setback from the property lines at thirty-three Boston Road. The property is a traditional neighborhood, single-family TSF zoning district, requires variance approval under section four-point-three, point-five subsection four, and for any other relief required on Lowell zoning ordinance. Good evening, and I certainly hope I pronounced your name correctly.
My name is Maria Di Agrella, and I live in thirty-three Boston Road.
Welcome.
With my husband, Avellino Di Agrella, and we just come in here today to ask for a permit for a garage to be standing, please.
So you have an existing garage?
Yes.
Um, and you're seeking relief for...
We used to have before a garage, but it's just like falling down in parts, so we just uh put him down, and we just tried to rebuild one, so we went to a place, somebody just told us to go to this place, and the people would just order them, um, from that TNT, uh, support, that's the name of the company, um, just some dollars. We don't really need a permit to, to, to have that one, because there's already a garage there.
Right. Okay. Thank you. Appreciate your patience.
You're welcome.
That being said, I'd like to open up to the public. Anyone wishing to speak in favor? In favor? And, would you like to s-
That's my daughter.
Would you like to speak?
You can.
On behalf, if, if you'd like to state your name and, and record to support? There'd be one.
My name is Anna Silver, and I'm the daughter of people who owned that home, and the people who went there and built it told my parents that if their neighbors were in favor of it, that it would be okay. So my parents didn't think that they needed a permit, they took this person's word for it. Had they known that they would go through all of this, then they would've had a permit pulled.
Certainly, certainly.
Well, thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
My name is Chris Ortiz, and when they bought it, they already did the existing garage on the property, and they just, and they're rebuilding what was there, because it was falling down.
Right.
So they even have a, a paper when they bought the house that shows the garage even on it from nineteen-ninety-six, I think it was, you know?
Nineteen-ninety-six.
Yeah, it's on there, so they, they would just rebuild what was there, because it was just falling apart. It actually rotted, so they didn't build it.
Okay. Great, thanks. I appreciate that. Thank you for that. Thank you kindly. Any others wishing to speak in favor?
Paul.
In favor?
Yeah, but he-
In favor? That portion of public-
He don't really speak too good.
That's fine. His, his, his physical supporters is, is plenty. Thank you for coming. Uh, that portion of public hearing is now closed. Like to open up, anyone wishing to speak in opposition? In opposition? In opposition? That portion of public hearing is now closed. Like to open up to the board? Mark?
I have no questions, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Robert?
So I see DPD had suggested that with a breezeway, would the relief for the ten-feet, ten-feet setback from the house would be voided, and would only have the five-feet setback from property lines? So is that something the petitioner is willing to, to look at?
I mean, I think they would, if, if it has to go that way. I mean, I think they, I know it is now, but a breezeway wouldn't hurt, obviously, you know, due to weather and stuff, it might help them anyways, you know, they have to put a breezeway, but...
Okay.
So you're willing to look, uh...
It's an option.
That's all I have, Mr. [0:05:27].
Okay, thank you. Dennis? Dennis?
Three, Mr. Chairman. I'd just like to ask Dylan, I believe is there, correct?
No, it's me, Peter, but I may be able to answer your question.
Oh, okay. So, Francesca did the comments, and I'm confused by the idea that if they were to provide the connection between the two structures, then the relief that they'd be seeking would be different than what the application currently has. So, the application that we have in front of us is to go ahead and approve it as a, or if we do grant the variance, as a separate structure, which has setbacks of 5 feet and 10 feet from property lines. But the building inspector, or the building department states that because it's less than 10 feet from the house, that it doesn't have a path to conformity, right? That they see as something that they can grant a permit on.
Right.
So, if we go ahead and grant the approval based on the application tonight, do we set the building department up with the situation where they can't grant a permit because it doesn't conform with the 10-foot separation? I mean, the whole point of this is to get a building permit, correct?
Yeah, the point is to get a building permit. That's a little bit more technical than I may be able to provide a satisfactory answer for. That may be something that needs to be clarified with Francesca.
I think if the applicant is willing to add the breezeway as a condition of approval, then that would be a definitive path forward to getting the building permit.
Well, that's true, though. If it is a breezeway, then it becomes one structure, then the setbacks are different for what we're approving tonight. The approval for the rear yard is 20 feet versus what they currently have, so they'd be looking for more relief. So, if the condition that we set forward is that they provide the connection to the existing house, then the approvals that they'd be seeking are different than what the application states. Is that correct?
I don't have the site plan in front of me, so I can't speak to what the setbacks are.
And item number five from Francesca states that the required rear yard setback of 20 feet in the TSF zoning district, the garage is setback only 5.7 feet from the rear property line. And so, they'd be seeking relief of 14.3 feet. But that's not what the applicant says right now. That's not what we're, that's not what the application has in front of us. So, if we do condition this, that they connect it to the house with a breezeway, so that the building department can see a path forward to conformity, so that they can grant a permit, then we'd be, this is my confusion. We grant a variance for the relief as a single structure, but with a condition to make it connected to the structure, but we're not, I mean, do we need to redo the? I would like to see this application set up differently, in my opinion, where the building department weighs in very significantly with how they see this having a path to conformity with what the application needs to be. Because it, you see my confusion? Jessica or Jess?
I do, yes. I, yeah, that's a conundrum.
So, essentially, if we grant this, then we're essentially granting nothing because they cannot build.
They can't get a permit.
They cannot get a permit. They can't get a building permit. So.
Standalone garage, it's now part of the house.
Right. So, quite clearly, we're at a, we're at a continuance stage, correct? So that we can have the proper application reasserted to include part of the petition, the breezeway, so we're not conditioning a non-issued building permit.
I agree, that makes sense.
So, originally, we were going for a standalone garage.
Right.
I think that was maybe an option that they might have gone over, just throw it into the mix.
Right.
So, that's might have been why they would have put through with that, because it was always as a standalone.
Yeah.
Never going to add a breezeway to begin with. We would do it if it was petitioned to do it.
Yeah, yeah.
But I think originally was just, you know, as it was, because that's how it was when they bought it in 96.
Right. Which may or may not have been the appropriate channels.
Exactly.
Legality-wise, and you were, you were given a bad egg. So, in order to not, and to Mr. McCarthy, I apologize, but I think he's, I think he's right, he's right on here, I think. Certainly, we'll continue with conversations with the board, but I think the gist of it is that in order to protect you, and protect the city, and maintain our ordinance, and get the proper building permit, and we're not approving air.
Perfect.
I think we have to have further discussion and then, and then come to a conclusion for a continuance. You in agreement, Mr. McCarthy?
I do. I would like more, though, that the building department weigh in on this application a little more thoroughly with what is the condition that we'd be putting on this regarding the breezeway or the connection, so that we don't end up with a big surprise with the building department requiring something that the applicant isn't willing to do. So, I, but I believe that's the, that's the, that's the direction forward. The building department needs to be clear as to what the compliance or, or what the path forward is to getting a permit. And then, the application needs to be rewritten so that we have the correct setback relief that we're looking for. Thank you very much.
Just need a little off.
What's that? Oh, yes.
Need a little off. That being said, Sean?
Thank you, three, Mr. Chairman. Actually, I think maybe through you to the, to Peter or Jessica. I don't think continuance will work here, then. If we're dealing with, I think they're going to have to, we're going to have to withdraw the petition and do a new petition if we're going to, if they're going to go the route of the breezeway. Because we're dealing now, what we're dealing with right now is an accessory structure.
Right.
But then, if they do new plans with the breezeway, now we're not dealing with an accessory structure, we're dealing with the, the structure as a whole. So, I don't think a continuance is going to help us because legally, we're going to have to still put out new notice, new legal notice, post a new, new plans with the breezeway, if that's what the, if that's what the plan is to do. But to the chairman's point, yes, exactly. We're not, what we're dealing with here, what we, if we, there's nothing for us to approve. If we approve it, it's a nullity, really, because you won't, your building permit's going to get rejected again, because it just doesn't legally meet the, meet the standards. So, my suggestion would be withdrawal, my suggestion to you would be to withdraw the petition, refile with new plans with the structure. Talk to DPD. I mean, I'm sure that, it looks like they've been helping you very, you know, very well along the way on this. We're just a short step, you just missed a step here, and we're just a short step away from possibly getting this taken care of for you, or getting it taken care of. But I think it, I think you got, got to have to have a new petition that's going to have to be refiled and renoticed and reposted. So, that's, those are my thoughts. Thank you.
Thank you. Man?
Through you, Mr. Chairman. First of all, I want to say thank you for waiting tonight to be seen. I know it's been a long night. So, I'll just really just recap what my colleague said. I think this is a project we can approve. You know, you got scammed or ambushed by some contractor, whatever, so now you come and do the right thing. So, like my colleague said, you know, either withdraw and do a whole new application because it's, with the breezeway, it's going to be kind of an attachment, not like a separate structure. So, I think overall, we can work with you guys to approve this. I just think it needs to be done by the standard, so it's safe for you and for the city, and just so, we'll work out all the details now, but I think this, this can be approved after it's withdrawn and submitted through the right, right package. So, those are my comments, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you. So, you know, as we, as we look at this, clearly, we want to straighten out the project and move forward so that you can put this to rest, and you can move on with your wonderful life and have your garage in the lake. So, I think to everyone's point, Mr. McCarthy, as well as Mr. Callahan, I think we recommend that you withdraw this petition without prejudice, which leaves you open for a new petition, a new application to come forward, so that we're able to approve it appropriately, so that essentially, we're not handing you a building permit that you can't build anything with.
Yeah.
Certainly, certainly. I, you know, I know it's, it's very convoluted and disconcerting, however, it's the proper thing to do, to satisfy your needs.
So, do we have to go through that whole process of sending everything out and getting all the stuff certified again?
Unfortunately, unfortunately, tonight's the night of unfortunate.
My hand hurted from doing all that. I have to do it all over again.
Well, the, so like the site plans and the thing like that does not need to be resubmitted?
It doesn't have to be, I'm sorry.
So, like the site plan, something that's been certified by, like, I don't know if you're an engineer or a surveyor, all that stuff is still fine. The only thing that we actually really need submitted is you're going to have to fill out a different application form, basically.
But all the letters that we sent out to?
I am not as familiar with what was sent in, because it was assigned to a different staff member, but they would definitely get in touch with you.
All right. So, then we'll be told what needs to be done for the next process?
Yes, definitely.
All right. Thank you.
Yes, but unfortunately, you will, yeah, public notice will be required against a new petition, and you will be back in hand.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
My own education, I originally led off the discussion by saying I have no questions, but I am always enlightened by Commissioner McCarthy. I always listen intently. It was my impression, when I read the petition, that we could simply grant a relief of 3.5 feet to legalize their garage. Is that a mistaken perception?
Do you have a? Jess?
I think the issue is coming from the building commissioner's comments, saying that even if you grant that relief, they're not going to be able to issue the building permit because it won't be compliant with.
All right. So, why would such a petition be before us? Why would we have allowed the petitioner to, to apply in this manner? Why weren't they advised that this isn't going to meet your goal?
The commissioner's comments came up in our standard staff review process, where we receive an application and distribute it to all the departments for comment. So, it's just an unfortunate timing issue where the comment was issued closer to the hearing date.
Thank you, dear. Is it the intention of the petitioner to build a breezeway, or you just want to legalize the existing structure?
Or to legalize the structure.
All right. So, what's the best way for these folks to go about that?
I guess if that's the case, we'd have to continue it to get further comment from the building commissioner on whether that's possible.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, to, just to, just to follow up on that, it's still, a continuance will still put us back. We can row the boat down the river, but it's still not going to float. Let's, we still have, yeah. Unfortunately, it, Mr. Briere is correct. In hindsight, you know, this is not the intent to have you come here. This is not, I know this is a difficult process for the residents and the citizens, and it's hard to come in with unknown, and particularly, you know, it's not something you do every day. We understand that. But in order to satisfy you before the snow flies, most importantly, because time is of the essence. Unfortunately, the summer is moving quickly, not as quickly as this meeting, but it is moving quickly. And I think from experience, if we withdraw without prejudice, get a new petition going, that'll allow you to do it one final time. You know, I agree with Mr. Briere. I will apologize to you on behalf of the board and others that you put in this position, but it's better than having a permit to build, but you can't. And then, if you move forward with it, then you're in violation of a building permit, and it's going to come down anyways. It's just going to become cost-effective. So, the label maker will be key.
Should I meet with Mr. Fuller first and go over before we go back to?
I would, I would reach out to Peter or Dylan or Jessica in the office, and they'll walk you through the, through the proper applications. As you mentioned, it's going to be the application process and moving forward. Your other items will be fine.
One more thing, I don't, maybe Peter can correct me, but I think they're going to have to submit new site plans showing the breezeway. It doesn't show on the site plan. And also, what the dimensions, the dimensions are going to have to be corrected to show the, well, not corrected, the dimensions are what they are. We're just, to move, to move forward with the, if they go with the breezeway.
If you go with the breezeway.
Yeah, yeah. The breezeway would have to be on there. I apologize, having some technical difficulty.
No, no, no.
I don't have the plans in front of me.
And I know we don't. I mean, again, I'm not, not sure what everybody else thinks, but I mean, we would have to see what the dimensions of the breezeway, if it is connecting to the structure, we'd have to see what the dimensions of the bree, how the breezeway lays out, connects to the, connects to the garage, you know, I mean, I don't know. They'll, they'll help you out with these things, but we, there will have to be at least a new site plan submitted showing the connection between the, between the residence and the garage, the breezeway. So, thanks.
And that, that way, there you're whole, and you won't have to come back in front of us and continue with penmanship cramping? Okay? So, you are in agreements. We're going to, we're going to withdraw per your request. We're going to withdraw without prejudice. This particular petition, it'll go away, but will not buy you for moving forward with your next petition and application. With that being said, may I have a motion, Mr. Clerk?
Through, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion on ZB 2021-23 for 33 Boston Road to withdraw the petitioner's application without prejudice.
May I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Briere. May I have a roll call, please?
Chairman Perrin.
Accept withdrawal without prejudice.
Vice Chair Peck.
Accept withdrawal without prejudice.
Member Callahan.
Accept withdrawal without prejudice.
Member McCarthy.
Accept withdrawal without prejudice.
Member Briere.
Acceptance without prejudice.
Member Niroge.
Accept withdrawal without prejudice.
So, we're clear from this one. You'll be able to contact the DPD office in the morning and move forward. If you have any questions, it'd be certainly helpful here, and we'll, we'll get your project up and running. We'll make you, we'll make you a priority in the future meetings.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Moving forward under new business, we have ZBA 2021-22 for a special permit, Nicene Antique LLC at 39 Prospect Street, Section 4.5. Nicene Antique LLC has applied to Lowering Board of Appeals for their property at 39 Prospect Street, located in the traditional multifamily TMF zoning district. The applicant proposed to convert an existing dimensional non-conforming, single-family dwelling into a family home. The applicant seeks a special permit under Section 4.5, non-conforming uses and structures to alter the non-conforming use and any other relief required on those zoning ordinance. Good evening, Counselor. How are you?
Good evening.
Enjoy working second shift this evening?
Nice to be present.
It is very nice to be present.
It's much better than the Zoom here.
I do, too. It's great to see you. Hope all is well.
Thank you. Good evening, Attorney Catherine Flood, here on behalf of Nicene Antique LLC. We are here tonight seeking a special permit under Section 4.5, non-conforming uses for property located at 39 Prospect Street, located in a TMF zoning district. The applicant proposes to add in addition to convert an existing, non-conforming, single-family dwelling into a two-family dwelling. In a TMF zone, two attached dwelling units on a lot occupied by more than one family is allowed. The property is currently vacant and in disrepair. The applicant proposes to renovate the entire structure, and as part of the renovation, to add approximately 750 square feet to the left-hand rear of the building. The premises will consist of two units, one in the front of the building and one in the back. If you look at the plans that were submitted, the existing layout of the property consists of two floors with a living room, kitchen, laundry room, four bedrooms, and one bathroom. If you look at the way the plan is set up, the back part of the building, the second floor, is not attached to the front part of the building. The existing floor, first floor, will be split. The existing floor, first floor, will be split in the kitchen, creating a kitchen in the front and in the back unit. The front of the existing first floor will remain the same, except the living room will be cut to create a bedroom and a living room for the front unit. The addition of the 750 square feet will create a living room, a half bath on the first floor, and two bedrooms on the second floor of the rear unit. The front unit will consist of approximately 1,151 square feet, which is three bedrooms, living room, kitchen, mudroom, and one and a half baths. The rear unit will consist of 1,411 square feet, which will be four bedrooms, living room, dining room, kitchen, and one and a half baths. The property is located in a TMF zone and the renovation of the property will be consistent with the neighborhood character. The proposed development does not pose any negative effects on the environment. It's the renovation of a building that is in desperate need of repair. The parking requirements are met by providing two parking spaces per dwelling unit. The parking, um, on the site plan that we submitted shows four spaces. The property will also have sufficient open space. The property is served by public water and sewer service. The renovation of the property will improve the neighborhood and create an additional unit of housing for the city. Pursuant to Section 4.5.2, the board may award a special permit if the board determines that the change of use is not substantially more detrimental than the existing non-conforming use to the neighborhood.
Thank you. We appreciate that. I, I agree with, with, uh, with your narrative. Um, and that being said, may I open up to the public? Anyone wishing to speak in favor? Welcome back. It's great to see you.
Sandy McNamara, Lowell resident and a retired inspector. I just want to say, in all the properties that I have ever inspected for this gentleman, as well as his business, as well as his construction, I've always walked away 100%. And I think he really deserves, and you'll be amazed with what he's gonna do with the property.
Thank you. Thank you very much. We appreciate your attendance as always. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? In favor? That portion of public hearing is now closed. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? In opposition? In opposition? That portion of public hearing is now closed. Like to open it up to the public, strike that to the board. Uh, Mark?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, certainly, the redevelopment of this property, uh, will enhance the neighborhood and far outweighs any non-conformity. I think, um, we can certainly provide the relief necessary and benefit this, this investor and the neighborhood as a whole. Thank you.
Thank you. Dennis?
Uh, three, Mr. Chairman. Um, I, I agree with what Mark just said. Um, this property definitely, um, is in need of some, some care for sure. And the fact that we meet the open space and the off-street parking with the, um, relief, um, that, that no relief is required there, I think is, is wonderful. I'm a little confused about whether or not this is a special permit or a variance. And I, just like Attorney Flood to kind of weigh in on, uh, the comments that were provided from the development, um, planning development staff. Section 4.5.5. What, what, what are we classifying this as? A single family versus a two-family? There's not a detriment? Could you just kind of go over that one more time, please?
So we applied under Section 4.5, which is a non-conforming use. It is, right now, it's non-conforming as a single family. So we're not changing any of the non-conformity. We're just changing it from a single family to a two-family. The, the addition, the 750 square feet on the side does not change any of the setbacks. And we have adequate parking for the two-family. We're in a zone that's, it's allowed. So we're not changing anything, we're not changing any of the non-conformity.
I understand now completely. Thank you. Um, but the new dwelling unit, uh, density is a change, isn't it? I mean, aren't we going from a density of, I guess it's a non-conforming now. Is that correct?
I, I believe most of the whole lot is non-conforming.
I, I understand, but the, the, um, relief required for a, um, minimum lot area per dwelling unit is 4,000 square feet, provided is 4,995. And now we're going to a two-family, and so it currently does meet the, or conform with zoning for the minimum lot area per dwelling unit, but it wouldn't conform with the zoning with the two-family. Am I, am I missing something?
I don't have the zoning in front of me, so, um...
I think you're looking for 3,000 square feet of relief versus, under a single family, it complies by almost 1,000 square feet.
But we can still modify it if we don't make under Section 4.5.5?
Yep. Yes.
So you're suggesting that we are changing due to the minimum lot area per dwelling unit, so we would need more relief?
Well, I, I guess I'm just trying to follow the logic that, um, we're, we're not looking for any more, it's non-conforming today, but it's not, it's not conforming in setbacks, but it is conforming in dwelling unit, density, if you will, right? And we are...
So we would need a variance due to the fact that adding more square footage to the building would trigger the need?
No, adding a second dwelling unit would trigger the need. Per dwelling unit, you're required to have 4,000 square feet of lot area in this district. And you only have 5,000 roughly square feet total.
Yes, 4,000.
So you'd, right, so you'd, your total, so do you require a variance, I think?
I believe based on We would.
Okay, so we're looking for a special permit and a variance?
Yes.
I think you're right. I agree. That, that's what I, I think so too. Okay. But I, I think that this is a worth, a project worth going forward. I don't like the fact that we're looking for that much relief, but, you know, it, it doesn't really have an impact on the neighborhood. You meet the, uh, usable, um, green space and the, uh, off-street parking. So nice, uh, presentation and, uh, I can support this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, no further questions, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Ben?
Uh, three, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Attorney Flood and to your client for being patient tonight. I know it's been a long night. Um, I won't belabor the issue. Um, I do agree with my colleagues. This is a great reuse, repurpose of the site. Um, as, as we all know, it's dilapidated in that neighborhood. And the conversion from a single to a two-family makes sense in, in this district. It's a, it's a TMF zoning district, so, um, you know, overall, I know a lot of relief is being seeked, but I, I feel like, um, this would add to the housing, um, needed for the city. So overall, I can support this and I wish you the very best of luck. Thank, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Robert?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, uh, Mr. McCarthy's, uh, questions, I also had the same kind of questions and I'm glad he asked them, so, based on, uh, the petitioner's response, I, I'm willing to go forward with this, to support this petition. Thank you.
Thank you. Sean?
Uh, thank you, three, Mr. Chairman. I gotta say, this is a very odd-looking house to begin with for, for a single family. It looked like, I went by it the other day in trying to get a sense of how the, with the construction, how it works as a two-family. It looks like it could have been a two-family to begin with. I mean, with the little, small, like, break area down the bottom and then it's like, like, it looks like there's almost like a, almost like an in-law. It, it kind of looks like, almost like an in-law on the back, so...
The second floor is not attached at all right now.
It isn't? Oh.
No, with the bedroom in the, in the back.
Yeah.
It's not attached.
Yeah, I mean, I didn't get a full view. I was just looking from the side with that whole area and, and, you know, it was kind of hard to see. And then, and then on the left-hand side, you can't see it, but it breaks down on the, on the, I'm sorry, the right-hand side, it kind of breaks down, just kind of, I don't know, it's just an odd-looking single family, I think. It's just really, and now that you tell me that those two areas were never attached to begin with, that's...
Well, they were attached in the bottom, but not on the second floor.
Not the second floor, yeah.
That bedroom stands alone in the back. It's very strange.
Yeah.
So the way that they're, if you look at the, the floor plans, the way they're adding the 750 square feet and making the two units, and they're separate.
And I'll try to connect them.
Yeah.
That, that, you know what, I mean, that makes total sense. I mean, in, um, looking at the, the structure and I was in the neighborhood checking it out, it's a very, and it's, it's, yeah, it's a very dense neighborhood, but, um, it, it looks like, and it's just been a blight in that neighborhood for quite some time. It looks like it, it'll fit, fit in fine as a two-family. I'll say, I mean, using 4.5 for the special permit, uh, I don't think we've, I don't know, when we've actually really done that in the past for, to cover these, uh, the reconstruction, the variances and whatnot, but, um, for this project, it would totally make sense on this, because the thing needs to be reconstructed. And to Dennis's point too about the lot area per dwelling unit, I believe, um, it looks like staff already, staff had brought up that comment that, um, on the last comment on their memo, Peter actually did it, uh, to the point that it would trigger a new variance, which, um, I see would be covered under the, be covered, covered under the agenda under other relief, relief, uh, requested. And is also covered under 4.5.4 as well, so, um, I'm in favor of it. Um, I think it, uh, it would certainly be a great addition to the neighborhood and I wish you the best of luck. Thank you.
Thank you.
So Counselor, as you can, as you can see, we've, we've ironed a few things out here. Um, it will be a special permit and the variance will be, come underneath the clause of any other relief required. I, I did, I did go by the property and the first thing I did look at was like, what happened? I don't know if they got tired, they ran out of wood, um, but it seemed odd and, uh, this seems like a, um, a plan and a relief that will, will make sense. And certainly, the positive reviews we received tonight in comments, um, are acceptable and we can move forward. So with that being said, any other comments or concerns?
No conditions.
No conditions. Straightforward vote for the special permit and bring the variance and, under any other conditions as required, relief required. May I have a motion, Mr. Clerk?
Three, Mr. Chairman, first vote. I'd like to make a motion on ZB 2021-22 for 39 Prospect Street for a special permit approval under Section 4.5 to convert an existing dimensional non-conforming single-family dwelling into a two-family residential dwelling.
May I have a second?
A second motion?
Seconded by Mr. Brier. May I have a roll call, please?
Chairman Perrin?
Approve.
Vice Chair Peck?
Approve.
Member Callahan?
Approved.
Member McCarthy?
Approve.
Member Brier?
Approval.
Member Nirohe?
Approved.
Counselor, you've been unanimously approved. We thank you for your time tonight and your patience. And we look forward to seeing you in the future.
We're gonna take, take a vote on the variance too.
Yes.
We have to take a vote on the variance. Right? Do you have to take a vote on the variance too, or?
Let me look into that.
Your comment, yeah, because I think your, your comment did say that the special permit would not include that. We'd have, we'd have to, that would trigger a new variance, so we were
Right. There's another section under there that was for 4.5.5C, which makes it like a little bit more complicated, the way we interpreted it as to whether they needed to seek a variance at all, but obviously, I'll leave that up to the boards.
Sake of, just for the safety of it, I mean...
Yeah, we, we might as well place it into the public record for the approval. Yeah, that way they, that way they were covered. So may I have a motion, uh, for the variance?
Three, Mr. Chairman.
Section 4.5.
4.5.4.
4.5.5.
4.5.5, yeah.
Three, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion on ZBA 2021-22 for 39 Prospect Street for variance approval for lot area per dwelling unit under Section 4.5.5 to convert an existing dimensional non-conforming single-family dwelling into a two-family residential dwelling.
May I have a second?
A second motion, Mr. Chairman.
Seconded by Mr. Vice Chairman. May I have a roll call, please?
Chairman Perrin?
Approve variance.
Vice Chair Peck?
Approve.
Member Callahan?
Approve variance.
Member Brier?
Approval.
Member McCarthy?
Approve.
Member Nirohe?
Counselor, you've been unanimously approved for both sections of this project. We wish you the best of luck.
Thank you.
And we'll see you soon. Take care. Thank you. Moving forward on the new business, ZBA 2021-15 for a variance, Ernst Durante 545 Broadway Street, Section 5.1 and Section 6.1. Ernest Durante, on behalf of Lozario Romalo, has applied to Lowell's Little Board of Appeals for a site plan review, special permit, variance approval at 545 Broadway Street. The applicant is seeking to convert an existing warehouse into a 12-unit residential building. The property is an urban mixed-use UMU zoning district. The proposal requires variance approval from the zoning board for relief from dimensional and off-street parking requirements and for any other relief required of Lowell zoning ordinance. We have a request for a continuance and the date is, for the record, I don't have it in front of me. If you could refresh my memory.
Today is July 2.
Continuance, September 9.
Are you looking for the, the, the continuance?
Continuance days is September 9.
It's in the project folder. Give me one second.
Uh, September 9. It's, Jessica, we got it. Sorry. Thank you though. Thank you for your response. We have it. So we have a continuance request for September 20, uh, September 9, 2021. Uh, may I have a motion?
Three, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion on ZBA 2021-15 for 545 Broadway Street.
9, September 9.
It's August, it's August 9th and then it should be September 13th, I think.
Well, the email we have is September 9th, so let's go to the calendar. We'll just go to the calendar and we will September 13th. Monday, September 13th, 2021, for a continuance, for the record.
I don't think I read the date anyway, so...
That's correct because their planning board meeting was continued to September and they want to come to the ZBA.
Right, so the 9th will be the planning and 13th will be us. Thank you for your clarification.
So to, thank you. To retract, to, to recap, uh, three, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion on ZBA 2021-15 for 545 Broadway Street to continue the public hearing on this matter to September 13th, 2021.
May I have a second?
I'll second the motion.
Seconded by Mr. McCarthy. May I have a roll call?
Chairman Perrin?
Uh, approve continuance December, September 13th, 2021.
Vice Chair Peck?
Uh, approve continuance.
Member Callahan?
Approve continuance to September 13th, 2021.
Member McCarthy?
Approve continuance to September 13th, 2021.
Member Brier?
Approve continuance.
Member Nirohe?
Approve continuance, September 13th, 2021.
Petition has been unanimously continued. We'll move forward on the new business for ZBA 2021-24 for a special permit, 7-Eleven Inc. at 63 Mammoth Road, Section 6.1. 7-Eleven Inc. has applied to the Lowell Zoning Board of Appeals for special permit approval to erect and terminate illuminated sign at 63 Mammoth Road. The property is a neighborhood business, NB zoning district, and requires a special permit under Section 6.3 and for any other relief required on Lowell zoning ordinance. Is the representative of the petition here tonight?
I'm here.
Good evening. Welcome. How are you? Good to see you.
I'm good. Trying to stay awake.
Yeah. Thank you for your patience and want to give us a brief overview, including hours of operation. That'd be wonderful.
Um, my name is Carolyn Parker. I'm here representing 7-Eleven. We're looking for a special permit to have an internally illuminated wall. We're looking for a special permit to have an internally illuminated wall sign. They currently have an internally illuminated wall sign, but since we're increasing the square footage, they are having me come back in front of you guys.
Okay, and do you know the hours of operation, illumination?
Um, you know, I...
24 hours?
I would assume it is, but I'm not sure, I apologize.
Yeah, I believe it is 24 hours, so what we'll do if, as we move forward, we'll make that a condition for confirmation on the hours of operation to be included into the, into the vote. That being said, I'd like to open up to the public, anyone wishing to speak in favor? In favor? In favor? That portion of public hearing is now closed, anyone wishing to speak in opposition? In opposition? In opposition? That portion of public hearing is now closed, like to open up to the board, Robert?
Mr. Chairman, I have no issues with the petition.
Thank you, sir. Mark?
No questions, Mr. Chairman?
Thank you, Sean?
Thank you, through you, Mr. Chairman, I don't have any real concerns about this, this seems pretty straightforward, actually, actually looks a lot, I actually like the new repurposing of the new signage, 7-Eleven signage, that extends a little farther out, and I think, I believe if that is a 24-hour 7-Eleven, if I'm not mistaken, if so, I don't, I wouldn't have any concerns with the hours, hours of illumination, unless anybody else does, so, thank you.
Thank you, Sean, Mark. I strike that, Ben?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you, it's pretty straightforward, I think it's, you know, just a standard upgrade of marketing and signage and all that, so it's a, it's a, you know, good upgrade for them and, for the business, so I have no issues. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Dennis?
Through you, Mr. Chairman, I am in support of this, I always like it when the applicant is well within the allowable area, you're, you're like half of the allowable area, so that's, that's wonderful to see, that kind of restraint, and not going right to the edge of the maximum allowable. And especially in a dense neighborhood like that, not having a lot of illuminated signs is, is a good thing, so, thank you very much.
Thank you. So, the only condition we will have is just to confirm that this is going to be a 24-hour illumination, strike that, a 24-hour operation, which will allow that illumination to take place throughout the evening. Any other comments or concern from the petition? Any other comments or concern from the board? None being heard, may I have a motion?
Through you, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion for ZB 2021-24 for 63 Mammoth Road for special permit approval under Section 6.3 to elect, erect an internally illuminated sign with condition, the applicant to confirm with DPD the hours of, 24 hours of operation.
Thank you, may I have a second?
They're open 24/7.
Thank you.
I just Googled it.
Oh, okay, thank you, so that'll be placed into the record as a 24-hour, seven-day operation, so the illumination will remain in hours of operation. May I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Briere, may I have a roll call? Chairman Perrin? Approve the condition. Vice Chair Peck?
Approve the condition.
Member Callahan?
Approve the condition.
Member McCarthy?
Approve the condition.
Member Briere?
Approve the condition.
Member Nirohe?
Approve the condition.
Been unanimously approved, we appreciate your time, have a good evening.
You too.
Take care. Moving forward under new business, ZBA 2021-25 for a variance, Hushman Afshah at 11 Rivercliff Road at Section 5.1. We are communication, the applicant has requested to withdraw their application without prejudice. Therefore, we can go right to a motion. May I have a motion, Mr. Clerk?
Through you, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion on ZB 2021-25 for 11 Rivercliff, Rivercliff Road, to have the application withdrawn without prejudice.
May I have a second?
I'll second the motion, Mr. Chairman.
Seconded by the Vice Chairman, may I have a roll call? Chairman Perrin? Accept withdrawal without prejudice. Vice Chair Peck?
Accept withdrawal without prejudice.
Member Callahan?
Accept withdrawal without prejudice.
Member McCarthy?
Accept withdrawal without prejudice.
Member Briere?
Accept withdrawal.
Member Nirohe?
Accept withdrawal without prejudice.
The petition has been unanimously accepted without prejudice for withdrawal. Moving forward under other business, we have minutes for approval for June 28th, 2021. Have all members read, understood, agree? Any edits, concerns, or additions or deletions? None being heard, may I have a motion to accept the minutes?
Through you, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to accept the minutes for June 28th, 2021.
May I have a second?
Second the motion?
Seconded by Mr. McCarthy, may I have a roll call, please? Chairman Perrin? Accept and approve minutes, June 28th, 2021. Vice Chair Peck?
Accept the minutes.
Member Callahan?
Accept the minutes for June 28th, 2021.
Member McCarthy?
Accept the meeting minutes for June 28th, 2021.
Member Briere?
Acceptance.
Member Nirohe?
Approved, accept meeting minutes.
Meeting minutes have been approved and accepted. Any other comments or concerns? None being heard, may I have a motion for adjournment?
Through you, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
May I have a second?
I'll second the motion, Mr. Chairman.
The meeting is adjourned, thank you, have a good evening.
You too.
A great evening, everyone.